And they're ready in the balcony, so I always say if they're ready in the balcony, we're all ready. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. This is a special City Council meeting. Today is Monday, May the 5th, Cinco de Mayo 2025, and I would like to call the City Council meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask the Vice Mayor, Michelle Prior, to please lead us in the pledge.
All right, please stand if you are able. Right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And with that, we will move to the roll call. City Clerk Laura Weisegger, would you please call the roll?
Council members Bowler.
Here.
Dayshug.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Prior.
Here.
Mayor Azia Ashcraft.
Here.
Five present.
All right. So the next item is Oral Communication on Non-Agenda Items, so anything that is not on this agenda but is a matter over which the council has jurisdiction can be heard now. And we'll take 15 minutes at the top of the agenda, and if we have more speakers, but they have to be in person, we'll take more at the end of the meeting under Item 4. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers under Oral Communication, Non-Agenda Items?
I think he checked Oral Communications, but do you mean on the budget item, sir?
It is a budget item.
Oh, it is a budget item. Okay.
And that was the only speaker?
Yes.
Okay, so we have no speakers under Oral Communication, so we will move on to Item number three, which is the Budget Workshop, and I'll ask the City Clerk to please introduce that item.
Budget Workshop for Fiscal Years 25, 26, and 26, 27 to provide direction that will be incorporated into budget option hearing materials for City Council consideration in June.
Thank you. And City Manager Jennifer Ott, I believe you're going to be presenting or leading us off. Yes, okay, so welcome.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council Members. We are here kicking off our public process for the budget, our two-year budget process. We've been working for several months on putting this together. We have two budget workshops. Obviously, tonight's the first, where we'll talk about the budget presentation.
We're working on it.
Oh, okay.
I'm texting them.
This is not.
A work in progress.
Not as.
Speak slowly.
There we go.
Yes, go to the next slide. Great, so we're here tonight. We're going to do the Budget Overview Context and Approach. We will stop to take some questions at that point because there is a lot of material up front that, and assumptions that we've made in kind of the, putting the budget together. And then we'll have Department Operating Budget Proposals that individual department heads will present related to their budget requests. And then at the end, have that, more council questions and discussion and direction. We also have the May 13th Budget Workshop that is primarily focused on the capital budget, but we do want to just acknowledge that there's a lot in this budget tonight, and we can continue this meeting to that, to the 13th, if there are additional questions or discussion that we'd like to have as part of that meeting, too. So we can do both. I do want to say before we get into some of the actual budget presentation that there's, all the department heads are here for all of the different departments. There's been a lot of work, a lot of collaborative work, discussions, tough discussions in some cases, but a lot of work that's gone into putting this together. So I just want to, and our budget team, who you'll hear from, our Acting Finance Director, Ross McCarthy, and then our new Budget Manager, Ecat Burton here, too, that you'll get a chance to meet. So I just want to tell all of them thank you and to acknowledge all their hard work in putting this together. The next slide is really just kind of a, not placeholder.
Madam City Manager. And I just want to emphasize to the council, just as the city manager laid out, I know we all have burning questions, but just jot them in your margins on your notes because we want to give them the continuity of the presentation, and then we'll stop and ask for questions when it's time. So back to you.
Thank you. That would be great, yeah. And I have this slide up only just to remind us because we do refer to these as we put the budget together, that the council has adopted strategic priorities. I'm not going to go over them, but I just put them in the presentation, so we have them as kind of our guiding, guiding light as we go through. The first section is on Budget Overview. So you can go to the next slide. Sorry, Laura, I didn't plan this with you exactly. And this is just, I'll start, and then I'm going to turn it over to Director McCarthy. You know, the next two-year budget, as you've seen probably from some of the materials, is a stretched budget, and it's due primarily to lower revenue projections. We did have a loss of sales tax, a sale, one of our greatest sales tax generators. We also have pretty unstable macro and development market conditions. Some of the development market conditions have been going on for a while, but the macro ones now that I think we're all aware of have also created some additional instability. And then we have, there have been a lot of great programs that we've added over the last five years, and some of them had some one-time funds. Those have gone away, and so now we're absorbing them into our baseline budget. And so we do have a pretty stretched two-year budget. We are, what we're proposing tonight is that our operating revenues cover about 97% of our operating expenditures, but there is a 3% that we are building in here that we would use some residual fund balance, not our emergency fund balance, the 25% mandated, but the additional fund balance to cover some of the gap to be able to maintain our existing services during this uncertain period. And you'll hear more about, you know, our process and our approach to that. We are trying to maximize, we do have some unspent personnel budget for this fiscal year, so we're really trying to use that wisely and increase our unfunded liability contribution and some of our, offset some of our MOU negotiating costs with some savings from this year. Wanted to acknowledge that. There are other assumptions we're going to go through that I'm sure we'll have questions about, and we'll talk more about them in order to try to get our budget close to that 97% coverage, and we'll go through those in more detail. This, all of this is proposed. We're still able to maintain, based on what we're proposing, a $9.5 million residual fund balance above and beyond the emergency fund balance, so that if there are additional losses of grants, federal grants, that we have looked at very carefully, or a major economic or downturn, we do have that $9.5 million residual fund balance that we're, we propose maintaining. So that's a high-level overview, and now we're going to get into a little more of the weeds, and I'll turn it over to Ross to take it from here.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for having me, Mayor, City Managers, excuse me, City Council. My name is Ross McCarthy. As City Manager Ott mentioned, I'm the Acting Finance Director. Before I start, I wanted to echo City Manager Ott's thank you, a big thank you to our budget staff, especially our new Budget Manager, that you'll meet us a little later, Ecat Burton. We've put Ecat in the hot seat since their arrival in February, but they've really stepped up. It has been an all-hands-on-deck effort by both finance staff and support staff throughout the city to bring this biennial budget here to you Staff is recommending an all-funds budget of roughly $335 million in fiscal year '26 and $337 million in fiscal year '27. Of that, the proposed general fund budget for ongoing expenditures is roughly $144.4 million in fiscal year '26 and $148.7 in fiscal year '27. Staff recommends using residual fund balance of $6.5 million for next fiscal year and $2.9 million for the fiscal year '27. Our projections, just like City Manager Ott had mentioned, result in a $9.5 million remaining residual fund balance over the 25% reserve. I'm sure we're going to mention this a few times tonight, just because, to sink it in there a bit, the proposed budget does protect the 25% general fund reserve in accordance with City Council policy, estimated to be roughly $37.5 million by the end of the budget period. Easy peasy. Okay. Staff thought it would be prudent to quickly, to quickly take you through the budget preparation process, different stages along the way, and some of the highs and lows we've encountered. As such, we will be revisiting this slide several times during the presentation. We will show you along the way the progress we have made throughout the budget process. Our initial baseline general fund shortfall came in at $6.3 million in fiscal year '26 and $7.5 million in fiscal year '27. This was our initial projection due to an expected slowing of overall revenues and increase in expenditures. We will get to some of the factors we have seen that have contributed to this overall disparity. However, we included this slide to show you our initial starting point at the beginning of this budget process. I have not planned to dwell on this slide too long, suffice it to say that we are not alone in this trend of tightening revenues and increasing expenditures. While property taxes have slowed, they have not decreased. We have seen these revenues increase year over year to the high quality of, due to the high quality of life and stable property, and stable property values of the city. Significant transfer tax revenue from major transactions and new growth over the past 10 years or so has led to a fairly substantial residual fund balance, and staff plans to use a portion of this over the next two years. This line graph combines the year-over-year increase in aggregate property and sales tax. Fiscal years 2017 through 2023 had an increase in this combined growth rate of over 5% per year. While this combined great, while this combined rate has increased every year since 2017, the rate of this increase has slowed, signified by the downward trend of this graph. Current projections saw a combined increase of between 1% and 4% for this next fiscal year. Breaking that prior line down a bit more, I wanted to show the property and sales tax a different way. The city partners with tax consultants to estimate the revenue we expect to receive over the next two years. Our property tax has been, has been and continues to be very stable. The city is projecting between 3% and 4% property tax growth over this budget cycle. Sales tax has taken a bit of a hit after the COVID era, one which we expect to almost recover from during the second year of this biennial budget. The city did lose its largest sales tax generated during fiscal year 2024, as City Manager Ott mentioned The most volatile revenue stream for the city is its transfer tax. The city collects 1.2% of the purchase price of every real property transaction. As the federal interest rate rises, our transfer taxes decrease, meaning that when the interest rate rises, mortgage rates rise, and buyers are more willing to sit on the sidelines instead of purchasing properties. The red line there, in the, in the red, is the federal interest rate, which started going bananas in the middle of calendar year 2022. As such, we saw a steep decline in our transfer tax, from more than $20 million in fiscal year '21 to roughly half of that two years later. The city is anticipating very slight transfer tax increases over the next two years, as the market is expecting two to three Fed interest rate cuts by the end of this calendar year. Alameda remains a great city to live and work, and we are therefore confident that property transactions will hold steady. Just one more quick slide on the transfer tax. This one goes back a ways, but I wanted to convey that property transactions occur all the time. Even this transfer tax has not come, even though this transfer tax has not come in the last, in for the last three years like it had during the pre-COVID and COVID eras, we believe there's still high demand for people to live and work in Alameda. I'll now, I'll now hand it off to Ecat to walk, to Budget Manager Ecat, did I say that? I'll now hand this off to Ecat to walk through more trends regarding the baseline budget.
Thank you, Interim Finance Director McCarthy, and welcome, welcome to Alameda.
Hi, everyone. Nice to formally meet you all. My full name is Ecat Arena Burton, and yes, I do go by Ecat. And prior to coming here to the city of Alameda, I worked for five years in both San Francisco and in Oakland in municipal budgeting, and specifically spearheaded incorporating racial equity analysis into Oakland's budget development process. So it is true, like Ross said, I hit the ground running as soon as I got here, and really proud what we have accomplished. And I'm really excited to serve the city of Alameda into the future. So let me first make sure I get this clicker right. Great, got the clicker right. So as Ross was explaining to you all over the past few slides, the revenue trends, this graph right here shows you, you know, how the residual fund balance has benefited, benefited from our increased revenues over the past couple of years. And just want to, you know, again, remind everyone that our residual fund balance is the additional funds that we have on top of our 25% emergency reserve in our general fund. So prudently, over the direction from City Council for the past several years, we have mainly invested a residual fund balance into capital projects and deferred maintenance. These are one-time costs, and that has lowered our fund balance over the years. We have, for this current fiscal year '24, '25, in anticipation of rising construction costs as well as interest rates, put an additional $4.5 million aside for the Aquatics Center. But this graph shows you roughly where we're anticipating ending by the end of this fiscal year at around $21 million. Now that we've gone over revenues and our fund balance, it is also important to talk about the trends on the expenditure side. As City Manager Ott mentioned, during the pandemic and after the pandemic, the city really stepped up to community needs and took on additional new programming and services to respond to various different issues that have arisen since the pandemic. Those new programs and services were primarily seeded through grant funding, most of which has been fully expended or expired. And so these new program costs are a significant increase to the expenditure budget. We're also seeing increases into some of our fixed costs, things that we have to pay as a part of running a city, such as insurance premiums, as well as paying for the healthcare benefits for staff. And then let's not forget everyone's friend, inflation. It is also hitting our city and is an additional stressor. And then finally, our debt service is higher in the current biennial budget compared to prior years because of the investments that we made in expansion when the economy was better. So this graph kind of shows you side by side how our revenues are trending versus how our expenditures are trending. And you can see that our expenditures are outpacing the growth of our revenues. We also want to make a special note of one aspect of our revenue stream that is facing more uncertainty than we've expected, which is our federal funds. When the new administration came in, we did a very detailed analysis of the $30 million we are currently receiving in federally funded grants, and we've identified roughly $6.3 million that we consider high risk of possibly not being fully reimbursed or possibly being retracted. And with that in mind, our team basically made it our goal that in balancing this budget, we make sure that we still had a residual balance greater than $6.3 million, so that we could possibly cover this amount of money if, for whatever reason, these grants were rescinded. So before we actually took a look at department requests, our team made a really big ambitious goal of scouring the budget and really ensuring that we balanced it at the baseline level as much as we could to improve from that shortfall graph that you saw earlier. So we spent a significant amount of time looking over all of our options, and the good news is, is we were successful in uncovering ways to balance the budget that actually reversed the shortfall and made it into a modest surplus. And so I'm going to go through on these next couple of slides, showing you what were the balancing options we found in order to do that. So on the revenue side, we found a significant number of options to increase our revenues. One was recouping property taxes. Another was basically determining that we have enough excess fund balance specifically for closed pensions 1079 and 1082, that we could use that excess fund balance to make the payments into those pensions, which brought us an additional $1.4 million of revenue per year. We also looked at our ambulance fee rate of change schedule and realized that we could align it with the biennial budget process so that the rate of change happened at the start of the biennial budget versus later, and that brought in $800,000 sooner into this process. We also looked at the fund balance for 1115 trust fund to pay for our unfunded pension liabilities. So we're transferring 15% there, which accounts to roughly $3.2 million in additional revenue. And we're using the vacancy savings from our personnel budget from this fiscal year to also prepay into the unfunded pension liabilities. On the expenditure side, we found ways to create savings or reduce costs. And one big thing that we did was create a plan to purchase expensive vehicle replacements much sooner. So tomorrow, you all are actually considering a resolution on the agenda for this cost-saving measure. We also looked at our city investments that had debt service payments over the biennial budget and found that we could have additional savings through paying off some of those debt services sooner. On the staffing side, we allocated some staff to the base reuse fund, as well as looked into slowing the hiring of police officers. And we also found that with the amount of vacancy savings that we're anticipating from fiscal year '24, '25, on top of paying for the unfunded pension liabilities, we could also dedicate it to one-time personnel costs. And I'm going to briefly pass this over to City Manager Ott to go a little bit into the police officers component.
I just, I.
Please.
Yeah, we just, I want, I added this table because I know there was a letter we received and just some questions about the question of slowing the police officer hirings over the next couple of years to help us balance the budget. And so I wanted to put this up there because there was questions about how that would work. And so what we're suggesting is that we have a goal of 47 police officers, which would still allow us, we would have patrol fully funded for our peak hours, so there would, there, and then we would still be able to fund through those 47 police officers about 11 positions, some investigations, and traffic, and training. We also, and then you could see if we were fully staffed, how that might work or look different if we were fully staffed at the 88 and continued to hire. I also want to acknowledge that we have looked at ways to, because of some of the questions about attrition and whether or not we can really afford to kind of keep the goal of 47 over the next couple of years, and whether or not the attrition rate essentially of some of those, or loss of some of those officers would outpace our ability to hire because it is very, takes a long time to hire new officers. And I think it is, it's a, it's a very valid concern, and we, and because of the length it takes. And so we have looked at and run some numbers related to potentially hiring additional officers so we can answer those questions if that comes up, and whether or not we can hire some additional officers to give the police department some, a cushion to try to really maintain that goal of the 47 over the next couple of years. So I can answer more questions about that, but I did want the council to know that we saw the letter from POA and then, and some of the concerns, and we are, we have analyzed that and looked at that. And so we can get into that in more detail.
Thank you, City Manager Ott. Returning to the PowerPoint, when you take in all the balancing options that we looked on, both the revenue side and the expenditure side, you can see the graph that we showed you of the baseline has significantly changed, right? We were looking at a shortfall of over $6 million per year, and now you see we have a modest surplus per year. And once we had the baseline budget balanced, we then turned to doing department requests. And I just want to quickly go over the process with you all so you're aware of the work that it entailed. So the next step of our budget development process is where departments submitted to us their requests, from very critical things to nice-to-haves. And after that, we reviewed them in detail, and the city manager then basically decided which ones were the most important to support based on the priorities set by this council. And so I'm going to hand it back to Ross to explain what was prioritized, so you all can hear from him.
Thank you, Ecat. Ultimately, our general fund, she's taller than me, let me just, ultimately, our general fund budget recommends, recommendations emphasize a few key points. Prioritize the well-being and retention of our current employees by supportive and modest cost of living adjustment. Provide equity salary adjustments to align staff compensation with market rates. Place a high emphasis on retaining current police department personnel and recognize the need to increase wages for part-time staff to reduce costly and disruptive turnover. At this time, city staff is not recommending staff additions unless largely funded by non-general fund revenues or matched with expense reductions. This final point here, increases in operations and maintenance budgets are limited to contractually obligated services with built-in inflators. No general inflationary increases have been implied, have been applied. I did do a last-minute addition of this slide for clarity. I wanted to compare our final ongoing revenues versus ongoing expenditures. So this excludes things like CIP and other one-time revenues and expenses. Ideally, ongoing revenues cover all ongoing costs. When we factored in department requests and our staff retention priorities for this biennial budget, our ongoing expenses are higher than our, than our ongoing revenues. We would need to use $4.2 million of residual fund balance for fiscal year '26 and $4.1 million for the next fiscal years if we were only looking at ongoing expenses. This is an equivalent of roughly 3% of general fund expenditure. This is an equivalent of roughly 3% of general fund expenditures. The next slide shows what our final use of fund balance is when we take into account both ongoing and one-time costs. Staff is recommending that our total proposed general fund biennial budget, including ongoing and one-time revenues and expenditures and project costs, use 6.5 million in residual fund balance for its first year and 2.9 million for the second. As stated early on in this presentation, staff still projects an ending residual fund balance above the 25% reserve of $9.5 million at the end of this biennial budget cycle. And now I'll turn it over to City Manager Ott for the last few slides.
Great. Thank you. So we also just want to acknowledge that, that, you know, there, we did look at whether, what, what it would take to balance the budget without using one-time fund balance because a, as a rule, we try to avoid that. And I think what, we did look at other potential ways to do this. We're not recommending them at this time because we do think that we, there is uncertainty about our revenues, whether or not they're going to increase or whether or not we're going to... And so I think we don't, we want to see how things go, and I think cutting, doing these other things, which are staffing impacts such as furloughs, you know, or reductions in major services and programs, or electing to lower our insurance premiums and create kind of more liability, or doing kind of across-the-board reductions, we're not recommending it this time. I mean, there are things that we have looked at and discussed, but, but we think they would be, they're premature, I guess is what we would say. And so that's, we aren't recommending some of these more significant impacts. In the next two-year period, we do think absolutely we need to be looking at ways to rectify the operating imbalance. And so we are discussing and would like to continue the discussions over the next two years with the council about potentially looking at increasing revenues, and that could be through some sort of ballot measure. It could be through, you know, looking at what happens at the base in terms of redevelopment, whether or not that adds assessed values. There could be other things that we look at. So we think we want to definitely be looking at some of these increased revenues. Some of them we have talked about or looked at before. And then we also need to have contingency plans and discuss what happens if the situation gets worse. And we do, may need to make some tougher decisions. And so we, we have already started this, but we'd be looking over the next two years at, if we need to make greater cost reductions, what those are, and put those contingency plans in place over the next couple of years. So with that, I think we're going to stop, answer questions, and then we'll turn to our budget presentations.
All right. Thank you very much, all of you. Nice job on the presentations. All right. Why don't I just start on my right, if that's okay with you, Councilmember Desog, and we'll just work on across the dais?
Sure. I think, you know, delaying the hiring of the police officer certainly does raise eyebrows, given a lot of our statements very supportive of, of moving towards 88. But, you know, the fiscal situation being what it is, it's understandable why you would, the city manager would, would put that on the table. I think the question that I would have, and maybe it's not something that could be answered tonight, but it's a question worth, worth asking, is, is it possible for the policing or, and I don't know if fire is covered by it, but potentially, if we could have a, if we know what the budget is for policing over at Alameda Point, so that, so that whatever, you know, we budget in terms of actual dollars spent or dollars that we anticipate spending, you know, based upon some estimate, for Alameda Point, all of Alameda Point, including this Target Shopping Center, as well as west of, of Main Street. So if we can estimate what the, you know, police expenditures are for out there, and then compare that against revenues generated by, either through lease revenues or through property taxes or through the municipal service district that was set up to help pay for, for police operations. The question is, can we put the spending and revenues, kind of segregate that for whatever that's happening at Alameda Point, so that we can somehow still be on track for west of, east of Main Street in terms of policing? So I don't think there's any, you know, you have, you can provide any answers tonight, but it's something to think about. So, I mean, of course, you know, there were ramifications for that. If, if you're going to spend, you know, lease revenues towards policing on Alameda Point, that means that lease revenues that would have gone to spend for other kinds of services or, or costs would be affected. So, so we, you know, raise that with our eyes wide open.
I'm going to pause here and ask the city manager to address Councilmember Desog's question, but also if you could give us some clarification on whether the Target Shopping Center could still be considered Alameda Point.
Yeah, sure. In general, we've taken a position, just to give a little background for some of our new council members, of when we've developed some of the former Navy property to try to maintain what's called fiscal neutrality. So when those were developed, there were a lot of discussions with the developers about estimating revenues and expenses, and then any sort of net adverse impact on the city's general fund to try to mitigate that with some sort of municipal services district. So both Alameda Landing and Alameda Point, new development pays towards services. So all new homeowners out there pay additional service kind of tax essentially, and that goes to offset those impacts. So that's what I think Councilmember Desog's referring to, and whether or not we could adjust that or change that, or look at whether or not that's truly mitigating the impact in terms of our costs to patrol those areas. I think for Alameda Landing, there's, there's no, to answer your question, Mayor, I think is that, that is set. We don't really have lease revenues from there anymore, so that, we would have, we would have to go to the voters to change that. And we, we can't use lease revenues outside of Alameda Point, kind of west of Main Street to pay for that. So I think that's, we can still look at it, but it's kind of, we wouldn't be able to change it very easily. West of Alameda Point, we'd have to look at a couple of things, so I'm not sure I can answer all of that tonight, but we, one is whether or not the Navy really agreement allows us to use lease revenues. They're pretty restrictive in terms of what we can use the lease revenues for, but, so we can look at that, whether or not we could use that to pay for police and fire. We could look at, we did do a fiscal analysis similar to what council members, and so we could make sure that we think, we could look at it a little bit and see whether or not we think that the property taxes and revenues we're getting are offsetting the patrol costs, which I think is what your question is. And so we could look at that further. I don't have that answer now. I do know that we do collect revenue from all the new development out there that does go back into providing services that help us offset some of the general fund expenses.
Just quick background, you know, the reason why the municipal service district was created in the first place, so that's an added tax, is because in the 1990s and prior to 2011, much if not all of Alameda Point was in the redevelopment area. And the belief was that a lot of the property taxes that would be generated would go into the redevelopment for redevelopment purposes. There would be some pass, what's called pass-through to pay for services, but the bulk of the, of the quote-unquote "tax remitment" would go to pay for redevelopment. And the problem, though, was that, this is getting kind of technical in the weeds, the problem was that the, what's called the baseline, the baseline was set at zero. So basically, any property tax generated from Alameda Point prior to 2011, I think it was 2011, went into, went into tax remitment, which is for the purposes of, of, you know, redevelopment and not for, for funding operations. So recognizing that in the late 1990s, that's why the municipal service district was created. But then when redevelopment was ended by Jerry Brown in, what, 2011, I think, suddenly, you know, there, they've been always paying property taxes, but now the people who are paying property taxes are not only going towards redevelopment, but they're going into, to the general fund. So, so that's why, you know, it's possible, it's something to look at in terms of making Alameda Point, and whether, yes, you're right, at Target, there's no leases anymore, but there is property taxes. And so maybe understanding what are the property taxes generated, you know, on, on Alameda Point, whether it's the old FISC project or the, it's the old BRAC project, what are the tax revenues generated, what are the sales tax revenues generated, and what are the municipal services district revenue there? And then taking those revenue clumps and comparing it against to what is the police services, so that we can kind of segregate police services out there and expenditures out there while trying to kind of save resources for east of Main Street, for historic Alameda. That's all.
If I could put the city attorney on the spot, I'm good at doing that. What are, what if any are the legal ramifications of going back years after agreements were made about property, you know, where property taxes were going, community facilities, district revenues, that sort of thing?
Madam Mayor, I think from a, if it's a community facilities district, we have more limitations. If it's general property tax going into the general fund, the council has more flexibility.
It's a community facilities district created to partially pay for police services and also landscaping services. So it's already in the ordinance that was created for that, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anything further for you, Councilmember?
No, that's, that's it for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowler.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. That was really effective and helpful to get us up to speed. So I too have been kind of focused on the public safety question, and we had a conversation today and also with the police chief about it. And I kind of, just stepping back, was hoping to hear for all, for all of our benefit, a little bit about the question of what is the correct, correct number? I know, remember, some members of this council have really looked at this in the past, but it might be good for some of us to have a refresher about what number has been selected? What's, what's the number that, that we're, that we're striving for and why? And what will it mean if we reduce that number from, I guess, 88 to 70? And finally, what, if we want to be more, given that concern about the keeping pace with hiring so that we don't have attrition that exceeds hiring, what would be the benefits and options to possibly increase that number 70?
Yeah, great. And maybe I'll ask the police chief to come up as well. It's a little bit of a tag team, right? Ultimately, you know, I, I made the decision to put forward this proposal. I think you'll hear from the chief, I mean, you know, if maybe we could go back, Laura, do you mind going back to that table? But I think it's important because I, of course, consulted the police chief and talked with other staff, and we discussed all these things and, before making this recommendation. So I'll start, but then I think you'll definitely want to hear from the police chief as well, I'm sure. So I think the, overall, the big picture is that when we were talking about, when we turned over all those rocks that we talked about, we had kind of gotten to the point where in order to balance the budget, even using some fund balance, it was, we were pretty far away. And so to be able to get closer to keeping, minimizing the, how much of the fund balance we needed, really focused on if, if we continue to hire new staff, it was going to start to impact our ability to provide services or potentially have to have impacts on our existing staff. And so that's when, for me, I'm just giving you the high level of why I would even suggest this. I, my strong preference would be continue hiring at the same pace and to try to get to the 88, but it was coming down to this decision between, are we going to have to cut programs and services which could impact existing staff or other impacts to existing staff? And so I would rather propose this, which is to, to not hire new staff if we can't fully, if we're going to end up having to impact existing staff. So I'm just giving you the high level. But the way we, right now, and the chief, we are at, we have 45 officers, or I should say, we have 42 officers currently. We've got a number that, that the chief will talk about that are in process. And if we hire all the, the ones that are in process, with the exception of a couple, we could get to, as of September 1st, get up to the 47. So what the 47 is, officers right there in this table is what's in the current budget. So total is 70 when you take into consideration other sworn officers, which are the sergeants, lieutenants, and captains, does not include the police chief. So even from what we're proposing, the budget is more than what we have currently today. So we're still talking about hiring new officers through that September 1st. And we're able to have the patrol officers here and fill some of these other special assignments, so. But I'll turn it over to the chief to talk more, but we wanted to make sure we had this backdrop up here so you can understand a little more of the numbers.
Welcome, Chief Joshi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'll start with answering, I think, a question Councilmember Bowler asked, is what is a, an act, a number? And, and so it's difficult to answer that question because there's so many variables associated with that. If there was a study that's out there, there's one that was conducted by the Department of Justice, which suggests one police officer per 1,000 residents. So that's kind of a starting point, but that, that can, that can change depending on the shift plans that you have, when your crime peaks, how you're deploying your resources, what level of crime you have, how, how, how many calls for service do you have? That's incidents and crimes. So it's, and, and what strategies are you applying? If you're applying a geographic command strategy, if it's a data-driven, intelligence-led strategy, those all can change what that number is. I will say that using a data-driven, intelligence-led approach certainly is a, it's a, it's a business approach, recognizing and realizing that staffing is a challenge. We want to leverage as much technology as we can, and we want to make sure that we are studying the data, the crime trends, the things that are going on in our city, so that we have our officers in the right places at the right times and expending our, our resources with efficacy and responsibly. So I hope that kind of gives somewhat of an answer of what, what's a number? It's difficult to say. I will say that 88 police officers would be great for us. I also understand and recognize that there are some challenges. So whatever number, whatever direction I'm given, I'm going to provide top quality, the Alameda Police Department is going to provide top-quality service to our residents with what we have. But to give you kind of a sight picture and just to echo what City Manager Ott said, so we do have some officers that just graduated the police academy last week. We have a total of six officers in field training, and it's important to rec, understand that when an officer is in field training, they are not solo. So for all intents and purposes, when it comes to operations, that is one car, even though there's two police officers in there, that's one car. They have to complete their training in order to be in a separate car, so, to create two cars even, and, and that's where we really see our benefit. So as City Manager Ott said, September is our target date to when we expect many of these folks, or all of these folks, to have successfully completed field training. But as of today, there are a total of 46 police officers on the books, six of which are in field training. Three are in investigations, and one is assuming some traffic duties. He's not assigned to the traffic unit, but he's, he's, his primary duty is his traffic. We expect another person to retire, and we expect that retirement to occur within the next month. So that'll bring our numbers down to 45 police officers. By then, we expect one person to have completed field training. Once that person completes field training, that'll leave us to five officers in field training. Again, the, the numbers in all the other units will remain the same. When we get to September, that 41, we're going to take those five officers that are in field training, and assuming that they successfully complete the program, we will be able to disperse them into the other assignments such as investigations, community resources, traffic, and the training unit. Right now, we have, right now, we have three potentials, they're all laterals, two, two of which are academy grads, they were with other police departments. All three are from other police departments. One is a full-on lateral. The benefit of the one that's a full-on lateral, meaning he's completed probation at his police department, he, he will go to a very abridged field training program. It's more of a familiarization of how we do things in Alameda. So that person can theoretically be cleared from field training anywhere from two to four weeks. The entire field training process takes 19 weeks to complete. Why is it so important to keep up with attrition? By the time, when, when an officer makes a decision to go work at another police department, we don't find out about it until they have entered into backgrounds, because their background investigator will come to the Alameda Police Department, and they'll say, hey, we have this waiver that allows us to look at personnel files, can we look at this personnel, person's history, because we're doing a background on them to work at such and such police department? Backgrounds are usually done within six to eight weeks. So a, worst-case scenario, their, their background is completed in eight weeks, they're gone in about eight weeks from the time that we find out. Now, to fill that person's position, it takes about 16 months to fill that person's position. The breakdown of that is about four to five months to do the initial hiring process, which is fill out the application, doing your oral board, going through your own background, a psych, a medical, and so on and so forth. It's about four months. And this has never happened where the academies, the And this has never happened where the academy, the day that we've, they finish all their hiring, the academy starts at Monday. Academies are scheduled. We use the Oakland Police Academy, and we use Alameda County Sheriff's Academy, and those are about four times a year, and they're staggered throughout the year. So if somebody, let's say, applies in January, by the time May comes around, they might be done with all their application, and academy may not start till July, so they're in a holding pattern until July. Then it's six months on top of that to complete the academy, and after that, they have to go through a field training process. So I'll stop there if there are any other questions.
And could I, Mayor, just, because you had questions about what we're proposing to maybe try to address this attrition issue? And I think, in talking with the chief, I think there is a real desire to not go, really try to not get in this position where we were losing people faster than we're able to hire and that we fall below the seventy that's here. And so, one, we have looked, and I am open to talking more about this, about whether or not we hire two additional officers to get us up to forty-nine there, which gives us a cushion so that if there is some attrition, we have them already in, we have officers to try to really maintain what you see here. Another thing that I've talked to the human resources director about that we want to do to try to mitigate this issue is to essentially keep hiring, so keep our list, our eligibility list. So the chief mentioned four months to get someone on an eligibility list. If we can keep our lists fresh and we can be recruiting on an ongoing basis, then we eliminate that four-month upfront period, and then we're down to the twelve months, and that could be less or sooner depending on when the academies are. But we would keep fresh lists, which means running panels, monthly putting people on a list, checking that list to see if people have gone to other departments or not, and then running additional interviews and backgrounds as we go so that we really try to keep the list fresh and save that four months upfront. So those are two things that we think we can do that we're open to talking more about is to really try to address this concern about attrition.
Can I add that? In event, if we create this list and we do have laterals or academy grads that get through the process, then we remove another six months from the delay. We can put that person immediately into the field training process. I wanted to kind of talk about how is it, why am I putting, where am I going to put the people that are coming in? I know that investigations is hurting. We are pretty good at the, on the street level. We have set up our officers, you probably see way more police cars out there, at least that's the feedback I get from the community. It's because it's a data-driven, intelligence-led approach. We look at our peak times, and we're able to put the maximum number of officers out during those times. But with that said, so there's a deterrent that happens when people see a police car, but that doesn't mean that all crime stops. Crime continues. And so currently, our investigations, we have two investigators that are in the investigations unit. They're detectives, I'm sorry, that's an old term from a different department I used to work at, they're detectives here in Alameda. We have two detectives. Each of those detectives is carrying a caseload of at least two hundred cases right now. And so that's significant. What that means is if they got no more cases for the next year, they could spend a day and a half on each case and hopefully solve it in a day and a half. If we add, if we get our numbers up to six, because the city is broken up into three geographic areas, my intention is that now we have two investigators per area, they sort of take on a geographic command type of approach, they're partners, they carry their own caseloads, but they're helping each other as they're working in these, on these cases. That'll bring that number down to about sixty-eight cases per investigator if we were hoping in September. But then again, we're going to still keep getting cases until then. So that's where the decision to increase investigations. And the other place that we want to fill is traffic. We get a lot of questions and concerns. My hat's off to the patrol division, they've quadrupled the number of, the amount of traffic enforcement that's going on, but that takes them away from handling calls for service and being truly assigned to the patrol division. But the next batch that I want to fill is going to be the traffic unit.
Chief Joshi, when you say that you have two detectives each carrying two hundred cases, which is stunning, and you'd like to get up to six, but it says on the chart that investigations slash community resources, six as of nine one twenty twenty-five, six when fully staffed. So does that mean that we've got two detectives and the other four? What does that mean?
The four would be in addition to the two that we, so today we have two that are in investigations, and then as we increase staffing, I want to add four more to give them a total of six.
Okay, and then you would have, was that you, City Manager? Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because I think what the confusion is, is that as of nine one, takes into account the officers that are currently still being in field training. So when they're come out of field training, the chief will be able to move people around to essentially fully staff the investigation unit. So it's not currently staffed now, it's staffed at two, but with the hires that we're planning through September first, we will be able to staff it at six.
At six. So how many community resource officers are there currently?
There's one.
Okay, okay. And I will save that for when I'm asking questions. Thank you for that clarification.
May I just quickly, I just want to make sure you understand, we ran the numbers of the two additional officers, I just want to get you the financials for that, and so we did run that, and so that does change the budget. In the first year, it's about six hundred and fifteen thousand of additional expense, and then the second year about four hundred and seventy-two. So we would be using our fund balance, at the end of the two-year period, our fund balance would go down to about eight point four million instead of the nine point five by hiring the two additional officers. I just want to make sure you have the financial.
Give us those numbers one more time, please.
Yeah, so the change in ongoing expense, because that's the thing with officers, those are ongoing, it's not one time, but it would increase to six hundred and fifteen thousand in that first year and four hundred and seventy-two in the second year. And the difference is really because we still do have the bonus that we're paying for the bonus. And so we would end up at the end of the second fiscal year at eight point four million dollars of fund balance.
And, right, and I think we're going to talk about a lot of different ways to slice and dice this before the evening is done, but thank you for that. Thank you. Anything you wanted to add, Chief?
One other thing I failed to mention, it's very small, but in investigations, the sergeant that's supposed to supervise the detectives also carries a caseload of almost a hundred himself. So again, he's trying to pitch it and help out as well. So just, that's where we need, in order to, so crime is several layers, you want to deter it if you can. If you can't deter, you want to try to make arrests in the field. If you can't make the arrests in the field, you want to solve it. And solving is a key component that requires investigations, and then, of course, charging after the fact. But nonetheless, as far as the police's area of influence, it's those areas.
Thank you for that. I'm back to you, Councilmember Bowler. Did you have more questions for the chief?
Yes.
Don't go away.
Or it might be for the city manager, I'm not sure, but...
She's not going anywhere.
So it sounds like, you know, given some preliminary feedback and concern over this issue, you know, that gap of between seventy and eighty-eight officers, eighteen, you're considering proposing just a movement of two of the eighteen now, and it was for roughly the cost of one point one million dollars combining the two years. Would it be fair to say that, so the first question is, would it be fair to say that you would double that if it was like seventy-four, if the number was seventy-four? Or is it more complicated than that?
I mean, I think it is, you could, you know, I'm looking at finance stuff, I think we could just double it essentially, because it's about, we just make an assumption of about, I think it's two hundred and forty thousand per police officer per year.
Okay.
So you could double that.
So in other words, if you had to do some rough math, and it was, the number was seventy-four, where does that leave us with the residual reserves? And how does that sit with your comfort level of what you recommend is, you know, sound fiscal policy for us in terms of the amount of residual reserves to retain? Because I'm trying to push back a little bit and test this and see how it impacts your opinion as where we could be.
Yeah, I think if I, I would, I'd want a second to like think about, but I think if you're saying, I think it would add another five hundred thousand essentially, so we would be at around eight million. Is that about right? I'm looking at the end of the second year? In ongoing, ongoing, but we'd also have one-time expenses, so I guess it'd be a little less. You want to talk about it?
Yeah, the first year, we have the seventy-five thousand dollar incentive bonus, and so it's about a hundred and fifty thousand per, two officers. And then we estimate around two hundred and thirty thousand per officer going forward. And so if we were to bump that seventy-two to seventy-four, we'd put in another one point one million over the two-year biennial cycle, and then end up with around seven point three million in ending residual fund balance.
May I just slip in a question about the seventy-five thousand dollar hiring bonus? Is that still coming out of savings, budget savings from unfilled positions? It's not...
Well, the fund balance, the, we assume for the hires that we're talking about here to get to the forty-seven, that we're using salary savings from this year and trying to kind of use that to kind of pay off some of those expenses for the next two years. If we add more, the seventy-two or seventy-four, then that, where are, that does not come out of salary savings, because we're already, we were already using the salary savings to essentially balance our budget. So that's, those are additional one-time expenses that would come out of the fund balance.
Okay, so then a question that I might pose for the council to consider, but obviously with input from the chief, is that at some point in time, do we stop offering that very generous bonus?
I think when we reach sort of a critical mass, and I think that number is somewhere in, I mean, I went back to, I did some research on, you know, our highest numbers that we've had in the past five years, and we've gotten to the low seventy. So I think if we get above that, I think maybe seventy-four, seventy-five, something like that, I think then we can start. I think we should consider sunsetting. We could consider sunsetting that. So I think there's, I mean, it has had an impact as far as the amount of interest that's come in, but, you know, and we've generated a lot of interest. There is a lot of, there's a lot of young energy at the police department, so they're recruiting people to come work at the police department. There's an interest, and Alameda's on the map, people are interested in coming to Alameda. So I think seeing the opportunities that are here, seeing that, you know, that the, I think, I think we, I'm comfortable if, in the interest of being fiscally responsible, to sunset that seventy-five thousand if we get to somewhere in the mid-seventies.
And then I just want to add, because I think I just heard from our human resources director that Fremont just added a hundred thousand dollar hiring bonus. So we are competing with surrounding jurisdictions also, just adding that.
Well, and this is not a question, this is time for a question, but I would also point out that one of the first slides you showed us was the budget deficits that other cities in the area and beyond the area, because it went up to Sacramento and down to San Jose, have. And I'm really not interested in competing with other cities, I'm looking at what is best for the city. But I might also add that all of those cities are larger than us, and they also have higher crime rates than us, but we'll have a good discussion, I know. Back to you, Councilmember Bowler.
I just, the opinion part of that, if you use that number seventy-four, and I forget what the residual fund after two years goes down to, below eight?
Well, for the seventy-four, it'd be seven point four, is that what it was? Seven point two. So I've, we really tried to not go below eight million, because, and I would kind of want to hear what other comments there are about the budget before I provide kind of what we're, because I don't, if everything stays the same, we're also, we have seven open negotiations right now, we're not through those. It would, I can tell you would make me very nervous to go a lot further than that, given the budget situation.
Makes sense, perfect sense, sorry to put you on the spot.
No, 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 sorry, that's my job, I don't mind, but I definitely want to hear other comments and thoughts about the budget before providing some sort of recommendation or thought about it more.
That's all for you. Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Pryor? And do you have questions for the chief, or can we let him sit down? Either way is fine, I'm sure, with him.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think you all did a great job, because I think most of my questions were answered. I, I, yeah, so that's it. I'm, thank you.
And we can always come back to you if you think of something, it's not like just one bite of the apple. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you very much, and Chief, I'll start with you since you're up here. And I appreciate the presentation, especially the discussion of the residual fund balance, which is something in government that you want to have, but it's, and I, I'll take my question there after I ask a couple more of the chief, but we, as we just heard, we're discussing the baseline of having seventy or possibly seventy-two, and my colleague mentioned possibly seventy-four. So I think this discussion will continue a little bit longer, but let's use those numbers. Right now, we have seventy that will be coming, will be staffed at seventy July, or excuse me, September first, she said, is that right?
That's correct.
And so with regard to those seventy, even if we said in this fiscal year, we want to have eighty, what, since the information that you've provided suggests that we would not get those officers here in this fiscal year because it takes so long to hire?
Well, so we have two that are in the academy, they're going to graduate in September. I mentioned the three laterals, I have to select two out of those five in order to stay in that forty-seven number. So I could get some people, as, I could get two officers in September that are in the academy if they successfully graduate from the academy. So that would significantly cut down the time there. And then the three that are in the process right now that are laterals, you know, that, or I could pick those three and just one that's in the academy, but we do have, we do have some people that are in the pipeline.
So potentially, at the most, within a fiscal year or even a fiscal year and a half, we could add five officers in addition to the ones that are coming on on September first. The three laterals, are those already?
If you give me just a moment, let me figure this out. So...
I get that there's two in the academy that can come on fairly quickly, or that can be...
Yeah, so there's, there are, again, they, we're paying for them right now to go to the academy. They're scheduled to graduate in September. So we could, we have three that are in sort of the bullpen, if you will.
And those are in addition to the seventy, to the, those that are coming on?
In addition to that total.
Okay.
I just, I just want, so I think, I just want to make sure, because we had talked about that there might be the potential to hire more this fiscal year in the pipeline. Is that correct?
That's correct.
If there was, if that was proposed in the budget.
That's correct. Yeah, so there's three, there are three in the pipeline, or three that are in, I have five total that are, two of which are in the academy that graduate in September, and I have three that we can hire as early as July first. But of those three, I would, I could either just go with all three and pick one of the two in the academy.
I think Councilmember Jensen's asking beyond September, if there was more money, let's say we were unconstrained, how many could you realistically hire this fiscal year, given how long it takes to hire beyond that?
Sure. On average, we, so I can tell you, in twenty twenty-two, we hired twelve, twenty twenty-three, we hired eleven, twenty-four, we hired fifteen, and so far, we're at twelve for this year.
This year, but next year?
We have three more that are promising candidates, in addition to the ones that I've called in the bullpen. We have three more candidates that are progressing far in the process right now.
That's helpful. I'm just trying to get an idea of, even if you had unlimited funds at this, after our meeting tonight, or there was an unlimited budget, you still would have, there would be, we wouldn't be able to staff up for sixteen months for some positions that aren't already, other than the five that you've already mentioned?
That's correct, there would still be a delay.
So this fiscal year is kind of already, we have to make decisions about these, the ones that would be part of the seventy and an additional, additional two, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think the forty-seven is through September first, and then potentially two more, which could be from that.
That's really helpful.
I think you are averaging ten to twelve per year, so we probably would be able to hire more if there were unlimited funds, but there is potential delay. I mean, it wouldn't be immediately.
It wouldn't be on the street for a long time.
No, no.
Yeah, that's helpful. That gets to my question about the, and the two additional officers that have already been vetted, that are already in the academy at our expense are available, and this is what City Manager brought up as well, that could be part, that should be, in my opinion, part of this discussion. So I'll just stop there. That's all the questions I have for you, Chief. Thank you very much. I might have more later.
I just add just some I forgot to say earlier, and that was, I understand that we have challenges, and if I, we have to make some tough decisions, retaining the people that we have right now, if I were to pick one or the other, retaining and taking care of the employees that we have right now, it would be a high priority, the highest priority.
That's a great, and since you mentioned that, I'll ask you then, do you feel... That's a great, and since you mentioned that, I'll ask you then, do you feel, you, as you mentioned earlier, Alameda is seen as a, as a good place to work for law enforcement? And so do you feel comfortable, well, we are in negotiations, but do you feel comfortable if we are able to, to come to agreement in negotiations that we can support officers?
I'm just looking at the city attorney's face and thinking he's getting nervous about that line of questioning.
And Chief, so I mean, if you were to answer that question, please answer it in the most general way possible because we do not want to comment on ongoing negotiations.
Are, are employees happy, the ones that we have now?
Yeah, our employees are happy and they're eager, and, and I think, I think they'll, I think that negotiations have to complete for them to.
Thank you so much for that, and moving on. Yes.
It was sort of related, it was a comment I wrote before, but does the, so would hiring two officers, Councilmember Bowler was talking about hiring an additional four, does that improve the quality of, of work? Like, so, for example, like burnout or stress or anything else? Like, is that something that you're taking into consideration?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. So it definitely, having more officers allows us to be more nimble. This is a very stressful job, our officer wellness is, is important. They need to be able to take time off. Now, they're guaranteed their vacation time off, they also have comp time banks. But that, the, the comp time banks are not guaranteed. It all depends on the staffing for the day, and if somebody wants to try to take some time off, it's, it's a little bit difficult when you have less staffing. So if we have more staffing, we can be nimble as far as moving people into key positions. I think the patrol division is, is absolutely the backbone of any police department. And so I would want to keep that fully staffed. I have an idea of what, that, I don't want to go below 36. And, and I think I can, we can continue to deliver a high level of service. And then if I can beef up the patrol division, I mean, I'm sorry, the investigations unit, that's great. If we were to get two or four additional officers, I would put them in patrol because that's sort of our cushion in, in the event. There are four reasons why people leave, service retirements, disability retirements, separated by sort of an unplanned separation. And then there are some people who just resigned to go to either other agencies or leave the profession. Looking at our cross-section of tenure of officers at the police department, I'm not as concerned about retirements at the, at the police officer rank. But disability retirements, somebody could get injured, and, and then, you know, the person could be, it takes a long time to get somebody retired, so they could be holding a spot. And, and, you know, that, and we're not getting a service, the person, there's no one, that, that beat is vacant. And then, you know, if someone's not a good fit for us, we're not going to hold on to them either. So that can happen pretty quickly as well. And then I can't control people that make a decision to leave the profession or go to another agency. But what we can do is, is ensure that we prioritize morale, prioritize their wellness, and be able to be nimble as an agency.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll go last, and I don't have too many questions. Oh, I'm sorry, how did we move on to the Vice Mayor? I didn't realize you weren't finished. All right, back to you, Councilmember Jensen.
I have some questions for Ross, actually, and, and the City Manager.
City Man, Acting Finance Director McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I have a question about, you, you mentioned the, one of the, the revenue sources is the recoupment of the Harbor Bay tax increment financing. And my question is, can you, I want a little more information and why, why, where's that $1 million been? So it's able to be recouped.
Yeah, I'm leading that effort. Yeah, I'm leading that effort with the help of our Public Works Director and Assistant City Manager, but.
And can I, this kind of goes also, I, I thought of it too when I was, when Councilmember Desog was mentioning a special district. So if there's any relationship between Councilmember Desog's question of having a tax increment here in this area and his potential ideas about other sources of revenues?
Sure, yeah, so what that is, is, and the city attorney is very involved in this, and we can all, we've been working on it collaboratively. There is kind of this agreement to take money from our 1%, not a CFD, not a, not a community facilities district or above, but property tax from our 1% property tax, so our bread and butter property tax that started many years ago as part of the actual Harbor Bay development, so Bay Farm development as a kind of traffic mitigation expense. And we took money from our 1% dollars and said, hey, we're going to put money aside from our 1% property tax into this fund to fund transportation improvements out at Harbor Bay. We don't have that type of agreement anywhere else in the city. We are very careful about ever kind of recommending use of our bread and butter property tax. It's been going on for many, many years. Originally, the original agreement said, hey, there's a list of these improvements. Once those are done, the council can kind of approve a resolution saying that we've completed these projects and this goes away. We did complete the projects, but in the interest of partnership, the city amended it, added more projects that were then have, are ongoing and have been being paid for with this 1% property tax. Those, we have a lot of projects that the Public Works Department's implementing to do that. We've, we have a pretty big residual fund balance that's accumulated there as well. But we are getting close to kind of finishing the improvements that were in the second round of improvements. And my, what I've done is, I don't, I've approached them to say, look, this is something that we had contemplated would sunset at some point. We're fin, getting close to finishing some of these improvements. We can no longer afford to put money from our 1% property tax into a special transportation fund just for, just for Bay Farm or Harbor Bay. But my proposal to them was that we have $3 million as a residual fund balance, essentially unencumbered, that we would, my, and this, this would have to come to council for approval, by just sharing where we are right now, is that let's have that stay there. We keep the residual fund balance in this fund, goes to them, we can work with them on the projects, and then we work on kind of an annual amount that greatly reduces how much from our property tax goes into that fund so that we can use $1 million a year to help balance our budget and pay for police. So that's what's currently, we're working with them, but then it would sunset so that eventually the property tax would go back to the general fund, the way it does everywhere else in the city. Those discussions are ongoing, and we're talking to them. And so I'm hoping to bring that amendment to the agreement to the council in the next month or two. They're not finished, so I don't, you know, I can't say for sure that they've agreed to all of that, but we're going back and forth and discussing it. But I have made clear that I just don't think we can afford to set aside bread and butter property tax dollars into that fund. We still, that doesn't mean that we won't make improvements at Harbor Bay for transportation. We have other funding sources, we've got payment management money that we would allocate there. And I think we're actually getting ready to implement that this year, is that right? For? Yeah, we have some payment management dollars that are going.
That was Public Works Director Aaron Smith indicating, yes.
So we will absolutely continue to improve transportation out there, but we would do it the way that we do it everywhere else in the city, but, but kind of have to bring back those property tax dollars to pay for police and fire and other general fund services.
If I can just interject a question, and you might have said this, City Manager, and I just didn't hear you. Who's the "they" who you're talking with?
Sorry, right now, it was, the reason it's kind of, it started out, this developer entity originally, and then it's been transferred and assigned, and now it's managed by the Harbor Bay Business Park property owners.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And they've expressed, they've told us some of their goals about how they would, things that are important to them, and we're trying to see between the fund balance that remains and some period of time of kind of phasing it out, whether or not we could try to achieve their goals and use that money to help them get to a point where they feel like there's some, there's some improvements out there that could be made, and then we sunset it and bring that money back into the, the general fund.
Well, that's, that, I'm sorry, City Attorney.
If I may just add briefly, Councilmember, your question relates to Councilmember Desog's question about CFDs. What's different about this is that the CFD that Councilmember Desog refers to is payment on top of our 1%, the City Manager referred to the 1%, that's payment on top of the 1% that use, enhances municipal services. In this case, there is no payment on top of that. We're taking the baseline 1% to do enhancement work, which is an unusual way to spend, you know, our baseline property tax.
And so to, to, with that 1%, does that mean that we're not using any other general fund monies or any other non-general fund monies for any transportation services or projects at Harbor Bay Business Park?
No, we are, we are definitely using transportation funds for improvements out at Harbor Bay.
So this is just, this, I, I, it just seems like that, and you say "they," so, and, and my other question then, I guess, is, does the city, the, the actual authority is with the city council to either continue this type of allotment or?
Yeah, I think, without getting into too much detail, there's two different ways we could approach this. One is for the council to essentially adopt a resolution, and the City Attorney and I have chatted about this, and, and make findings that we have in fact completed the improvements and dissolve it altogether. Or we could try to come to a mutually agreeable third amendment to the agreement and kind of work together with them to phase it out over time. And, and so we're, we're trying to achieve the latter right now. But it doesn't foreclose our ability to do the, the first option.
Thank you, so I'll ask more question, or, or provide more direction about that later on in this discussion. I have a, a question about the chart on, well, it's not, yeah, it's a question about the residual fund balance chart, it's on page 14. And I just wanted to ask for input from, actually from the City Manager regarding the, the residual, residual fund balance, the fund balance, carryforward fund balance. Just seven years ago, the fund balance was $5 million, almost $5 million. And it went up substantially, tremendously during the pandemic as we, I guess, weren't offering so many services. It's page 14. And then as we came out of the pandemic, it appears to have been drawn down. So I ask you, you were, you had, you had not, were not here in 2018, 19 when this, when the fund balance was so low, but, and we don't have any, on this chart at least, any prior year historical information, but it would seem that having a huge residual fund balance has not, having a low one did not hurt the city. We, we were able to increase it during the pandemic for reasons outside of our control, but now it's, it's still about 500% higher than it was seven years ago. So I, I just want to get your input about why do we need to keep it at 2019, 16, the, the proposal that's in the budget?
Yeah, and the proposal in the, my recommended budget is keeping that at a nine and a half million. I think, we think that's a good number to keep it at because of what you heard about the federal grants, which is, we think are about $6 million or high risk, so that gives the council flexibility to backfill those in the event that the federal government takes that away. Also, there's signs that we may be entering into a deeper recession, we don't know, but there's uncertainty, and so having a little extra money to help us get through a tough couple of years if things get worse. So we think nine and a half million is a number that's, you know, we had lots of conversations with finance and City Manager's office, and, you know, so we think that makes sense where we keep some residual fund balance, but we use some of it to try to maintain some stability through the next couple of years.
And nine million seems appropriate, and I, and I also agree with that too. And as I look at this chart, it seems like a good balance, so.
Yeah, and it, and it's a judgment call, right? I mean, is it 8 million, is it 7 million? I mean, you're asking some of these questions, and, and those are all fair questions to ask. You know, I think partly the council has to decide what it feels comfortable with. This is what we're proposing, if we go down to 8 million, that still gives us some cushion over the six and a half, but, you know, it starts to get a little tighter. But we're trying to weigh that against, obviously, the desire to hire police and other things that are really important too.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Back to you, Vice Mayor.
So, yeah, that was, I'm glad you finished with that, because that's, that was really the page I had a question about. So I just have a clarif, a couple of clarifying questions. So on that same page, it says estimated fiscal year 2024, '25 ending residual balance of the 21 million. Are, is it? Yeah, is it because these projects, like, for example, Emma Hood, the Aquatic Center, et cetera, that, that we had budgeted for money and then that's what was left over after the project was complete?
No, those are, to be clear, the 21 million is net of those expenses. So we just wanted to be clear that we aren't, that 21 million is kind of unprogrammed and that that's net of the, because the council's already made the decision to fund Emma Hood and the Aquatic Center, and we have lots of capital projects that were approved and budgeted as part of the la, this current fiscal year. So we just wanted to be clear that the 21 million is net of all these other things the council had already assigned to that fund balance. So it's kind of unprogrammed residual fund balance.
Okay, so then it, that 21 million, I guess that was my clarifying question, isn't the, I don't know what slide it is now. I think it could be page 21, where it looks like we're going to, because I have it in my notes, but I don't see it on the slides, that one year was 6.3 million, and then for the '26, '27, it was 7.5 million, and then to make up for those two years, the gap, I guess. And then what would be left over is the nine and a half million.
Correct.
Okay. Because I, I was thinking that those added up to that 21 million, and I was like, but they don't really add up, but it's close, and so that's what was confusing.
Just to be clear, the 21 million is what we're starting this, would, what we're estimating to what our fund balance will be at the end of this fiscal year, that we would have available to program or to use as part of the next two-year budget.
Okay, so we're, we are planning to spend down the, as Councilmember Jensen noted, the.
Correct, and, and leave it at nine and a half, whether, it will obviously depend on what the direction is from the council, yeah.
Okay, so if no one else has another question at the moment, I'll go with mine. And actually, you all have asked some of the same things I was going to ask, so I don't have too many. What I did want to know, and by the way, this isn't a question, but City Manager, I do commend you for your conversations with the Harbor Bay Business Park owners. That is the sort of creativity and just doggedness that I want to see in approaching this budget conundrum, because there are no easy answers. We've, we've picked the low-hanging fruit. The, and I did want to disclose for the record that I had a conversation with Kevin Horikoshi from, is it Lieutenant Horikoshi? Sergeant, Sergeant Horikoshi, last week, I think he might have contacted others, and he submitted a, a letter, wasn't able to attend this evening. So in no particular order, the, the, on, the financing of the Aquatic Center, Interim Director McCarthy, you want to come up? And you might know by heart what, what slide number is that? When it talks about, on the Aquatic Center, the debt that's on the. Is that?
14, or is it the?
Is it? Yeah, there it is. So what, so the, the last bullet on the right side of page 14 says the 4.5 million additional set aside for the Aquatic Center. And that has to do with the way we're financing it, is that correct? No?
No, well, there's two, there's two mentions of the Aquatic Center. One is the increase in debt service to kind of explain, is that the one that you're talking about?
It's 15, it's the bottom of 15, you're right.
Yeah, so the next slide.
So significant increase to debt service from 1.3 million to almost 3 million due primarily to Aquatic Center financing. So the question I had for that is, is there a way we can make that better to refinance, to?
Well, we just financed that, what, in December of '23, if I'm not mistaken? Right, so we could, there, there are ways that we can go and see if we can extend those debt payments out or, or kind of restructure the debt. I, I don't know how much that's going to save, to tell you the truth. Interest rates now are higher than they were at the time. And so as far as, you know, we'd have to talk to our bond counselor or different, different consultants that we have to see if we can, if that is an option to, to reduce those debt payments.
I appreciate that, and it, all of the above is true that you just said. I just think that we, as the City Manager said, do need to be turning over every rock. So if, if that is something that could be looked into, I would be interested in that. And then on slide, I put down 28, let's see if that's true and correct.
We added, we added one slide, so the numbers might be a little off, so sorry about that, Laura. Laura.
Oh, that's okay. I, no, it was, well, at least it's 28. I did the revised 5.5 one.
Oh, good.
So, yeah. You had to do a refresh on that, yes. And my iPad had to stall out for a time. But we're past all that now, it's all good. On this one, the second bullet point, but it's really like a little arrow, said, so this is under evaluate potential options to increase revenues, existing library tax increase. So I believe it is a bond measure, was it not, a bond measure to build the new library, as opposed to a tax? And how would that work? Because I, well, how would that work? Because we've been paying off the, the construction of the library for, and there's the library director. I know neither of you was there way back when. I was, I co-chaired that campaign. So I'm just, I'm just interested in, how would this work?
Sure.
And you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, everybody. Mike Eitner, library director.
Hi.
So approximately half of the library's budget comes from secure property tax. And so that's the property, that's the tax increase that we're talking about. Based on my understanding where we are, that property tax has not been increased since it was implemented. So there's an opportunity there. Should the voters be interested in paying more for the library? Obviously, if the library receives more money through secure property tax, it's less reliant on general fund, and those dollars can then go back to the general fund to help with the ongoing pressures in the general fund.
Okay, how did we get that money from secure property tax to the library? That wasn't by a ballot measure?
This, I, that definitely predates me.
Probably everyone in this room, for that matter.
There's, there's some, it was related to Prop 13, and there was a court case, and that's about all I know.
Yeah.
But there's, if, there's the secure property tax that the library receives, and has been receiving for, for several decades.
Okay.
So it is separate, going back to your original question, Mayor, it is separate from the bond to build the, the new main library.
Got it. The, and if you know ballpark figure, what is the amount that comes into the library revenues? You said roughly half their budget, about what dollar?
Right, it's about 3.6 million dollars, 3.5, I think, this fiscal year.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, super helpful. And then, let's see. And Chief Joshi, can I get you back briefly, please? So what I wanted to ask you is, with the current staffing now, or I would say understaffing, does that put your officers at greater risk of, say, injuries from having to work overtime, longer shifts?
So we've been, it could put them at greater risk for fatigue. I mean, any, no matter what the staffing is, a chance of injury, you know, if they're, you know, in the normal operations. But fatigue could definitely be a factor. One of the things that we pay attention to, though, is how much overtime, how much extent, extension of shifts are occurring. Are there ways that we can let officers get out early, if there are things that the incoming officers from the next shift could take on? That's, that's the goal. Our sergeants are very committed to the officer's well-being. So I hope that answers a question.
Okay, I do. And do you, do you encourage them to take the vacation time that they are allocated?
Yeah, so every year, they get to draw their vacation. That's guaranteed time off. We try to accommodate comp time. But again, staffing is dependent on that. If someone is sick, that impacts our ability to give someone else discretionary time off. If we have training, because I'm a big proponent of training, we've increased our training numbers 11 times what the state mandate is, because we have a young department. 90% were hired by me that are in the patrol division. 90% of the patrol division were hired by me. So that's a big risk for us as an, as an agency to have a very young police department. But as long as we're providing training and frontline supervision, I'm confident.
But to that point, would you say that your greatest need is for laterals?
My preference is laterals, because they're going to bring a level of experience and understanding. They understand risk a lot better than a brand-new officer would.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, that was all for me. So then, oh, help me out, Madam Clerk. No, no, you're good, Chief Joshi, at ease. What, how are we going to handle public comment? Because we, you know, usually we take, if it's just a regular meeting, we have an agenda item, we hear council questions, and then we go to public comment. But we're going back and forth. What, what do you?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could call them now, prior to the departments, and then, or they could defer if they want to wait to hear the department ones, because, I mean, they're probably both on specific things, but I think they, it might take a while to get through it all. So I think it's really your prerogative.
I'd kind of like to hear from the public now, council.
Yeah, there's only two, so.
Two, okay. Okay. All right, let's hear public comment.
Okay. First up is Ruth Abbey.
Welcome, Speaker Abbey.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I am Ruth Abbey from Community Action for Sustainable Alameda. And we were formed in 2008 specifically to help the city implement its climate action plan, which is now the Climate Action Resiliency Plan. And that plan, including the update, which you recently approved, identified a lot of unfunded needs in order to implement our plan. And that includes staffing needs. We do have our Sustainability and Resilience Manager in place since December 2020. And we have our, the city has provided for an ongoing relationship with AmeriCorps through our Civic Spark Fellow since 2017. That program was defunded by the Trump administration, and our Civic Spark Fellow was put on furlough. That program may never come back. And while there could be other fellowships and other opportunities for the city to bring on brand-new folks, recent graduates, and that sort of thing, as kind of fellows, I really would recommend, our letter to you recommended investing into a junior staff position to really replace that Civic Spark Fellow position, and, and provide an ongoing implementation of someone who could learn on the job, and then we could keep around, rather than having to lose them every year. The Civic Spark Fellows come for 11 months, and they get all trained up and all excited, do a great job, and move on. And so I think that there is no recommendation from the department at this time to add more staff. But, so this would be a request from the public, specifically from CASA, to support one of your strategic priorities from your strategic plan, which was to, you know, prioritize sea level rise, resilience, and climate mitigation. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Rod Harris.
Welcome, Speaker Harris. Did he leave?
Well, if he comes back.
If he comes back. And what about online, Madam Clerk?
I have one online now.
Okay, let's go to that.
Karen Butter.
Welcome, Speaker Butter.
Hello, Mayor Ashcroft and council members. My name is Karen Butter, and I'm here tonight as president of the Friends of the Alameda Free Library. I'm speaking in support of the library's budget request. For the past 50 years, FAL has contributed to the outstanding library programs that draws infants to storytime, schoolchildren to educational programs, teens to study sessions and college prep, and adults to book clubs and lectures. We're continually impressed with the outstanding programs for all age levels developed by our exceptional library staff. However, the Alameda Free Library is confronted by a number of significant challenges. The proposed library budget addresses the critical issues of safety, provides data to adjust operating hours, identifies staffing to optimize services to the community, along with responsible solutions for operational efficiency. It clearly identifies the challenges and sensible ways to address them. It is a well-thought-out approach to ensure that the Alameda Free Library can continue to deliver the services and programs expected by Alamedans. I call out the issue of safety, since my organization manages a library cafe and books for friends, staffed by volunteers. We are concerned about ensuring that the library is a safe and secure place for staff, volunteers, and all library patrons. We hear continued reports from staff and volunteers about a surge in negative incidents. This is reflective of the larger societal issues. At the same time, the library serves as a refuge for all. I urge the city council to support Director Eitner's proposal so that the Alameda Free Library can continue and strengthen its role as a vital community resource for all Alamedans. Finally, I invite all Alamedans to the next used book sale with well over 700 boxes of books from May 14th to the 17th in the Stafford Room of the library. Thank you.
Which indirectly supports the library. Our next speaker?
And that was our last speaker.
Oh, okay. That was all?
Yes.
Okay, we closed public comment, but then if more people come in, as we go through these different sections.
I will keep you posted, thank you.
Okay. Madam City Manager, where are we?
We're going to go now to our departments. And we did, this is a little different, where we're actually doing it from biggest departments to smallest. So we are going to start with the police departments, and so we're, put the chief in the hot seat again. Can you use the clicker right there?
Thank you. All right, the key functions at the police department is patrol division, traffic, investigations, records, support services, communications, which is dispatch, and then the animal shelter. Some of the things that really, that we're really proud of, highlights from the past year, we reduced crime by nearly 13%. As I mentioned in a previous city council meeting, industry standards, say, best practices say that any reduction between 5 and 10% in a one-year period is significant. So our, our police department is working extremely hard. We've carried that momentum into this year. We're at about a 30% reduction in all crime in Alameda. And my hat's off to the line-level police officers and their sergeants that are, that are really taking the charge on this. We're 100% compliant with AB 953 on stop data collection. We achieved an overall community rating of 4.7 out of 5.0 for officers' professionalism. Much like Yelp, it's a five stars. I know my floor is anything with four stars and above, I'm going to that place. So Alameda PD is a good place to do business at. We hired 15 new officers through the city's hiring incentive, and fully staffed the patrol division. We acquired and implemented early-morning software. We've gotten the drones. We just started using those, have been beneficial. And then we implemented a central repository for all APD systems for criminal investigations. What that means is, essentially, we've created a Google search-type engine at the police department for all of our files and all of our investigative leads. So that should cut down investigative time use. Again, going back to what I said earlier, leveraging technology is key. And then we updated all of our required policies, and we didn't just meet standards, we exceeded those standards. Some budget considerations, we need to increase supplies required for mandatory training. There's, as we hire more police officers, as we continue to meet the minimum standards, we have to use certain equipment. Once that equipment is used, we have to replenish it. So we need a, that's a consideration for the increase, the request for funding. The Supreme Court recently came out with a ruling that now is related to the concealed carry weapon process. So there are way more applications that are coming in from our residents, people applying for concealed carry weapons. Originally, the Alameda County Sheriff's Office was handling that. They're backlogged. I believe there's some civil action against them for the delays. And so to mitigate the risk in our city, we have acquired some software that helps expedite, but we still have to do our due diligence and backgrounding people that are applying for concealed carry weapons. DNA testing, again, much like leveraging technology, DNA is very good to help with prosecutions. And so that's another consideration. The county has a system called CAL ID, which helps with identifications, identifying people, processing. We use that system to get our cases moved forward. They just have an operational cost that there's a 5% increase, so we need to be able to keep up with that. And then finally, funding for our Wi-Fi system to upload evidence while in the field. That's important. We, as we gather evidence in the field, we want to be able to upload that. That's really from our cameras in the car. And so we want to, as quickly as possible, be able to upload that. So there's an increased cost in, in the Wi-Fi. So those are the considerations. Here are the things that we're recommending. Services and supplies, those are associated with the equipment costs that I talked about. Sorry, let me just grab my notes here. So as I mentioned earlier, this is going to be tied to equipment and supplies, background services for concealed carry, the, the DNA testing. We did have a huge increase in the DNA testing cost, and that was after we had the quintuple murder. There was a significant amount of murders. We had a significant amount of DNA that we needed testing. We wanted to do some expediting, so we had an increased cost. Historically, we haven't had that big of a cost, but we still factor that in going forward. But we, our request is much lower than what it originally was. And then, as I mentioned, it's the telecom costs. As far as workforce change proposals, we're looking at adding an administrative technician, one. This person would assist with live scan. The city currently uses a live scan service to hire new employees. We could do that right here in-house. The police department would provide that as a service. We could also provide that as a service to the community. Before I got here, it's my understanding that the Alameda Police Department provided that service. It was convenient for, for people to come just to the police department and do live scanning for things like being a chaperone at a school, for school field trips, things like that. This person would also help. We would have them cross-trained to assist with concealed carry weapons permitting process. Then we have two senior public dispatchers. We're recommending having, adding those two to the existing. We, right now, just have two. We have them spread out to where they do their shifts slightly overlap with all the employees, but they had to change their shifts. Great appreciation for the senior dispatchers who changed their shifts to be able to accommodate my desire to have supervision. I'm big on supervision. So we have that. But the amount of overlap that they have on one shift is just two hours. So if we were to add two, we'd spread it out more, and we'd have much more face-to-face with, with the supervisor. So these are, these are not recommended, because we understand the situation. But what we are recommending are the services and supplies requests.
Thank you. And we'll go on to the fire department desk. And so, council, if you will just jot your notes down, that your questions that you might have for each department, we will take questions at the end. Thank you, Chief Joshi. Welcome, Chief Luby.
Good evening.
Oh, you know what? I have a question that goes across the board.
Good, save it till the end. Thank you. Chief Luby.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, Nick Luby, fire chief. So I'm here today to present our budget, our fire key functions that we do day-to-day in our operations. Obviously, our primary one is fire suppression operations, putting out the fires. In addition to that, which is 80% of our calls, advanced life support, emergency medical services, that is our ambulance services, along with the fire engines and the paramedics that are on the fire engines. Training is a key function. Our training division is responsible for training all our recruits. We do all our own new hire training within the department. We do not contract out. We actually contract with other departments to provide that training to them, and they send their recruits to us. In addition to that, the training division takes care of all mandated training for all our incumbents. And also, we do community events and firefighter for the day, and work with Chamber of Commerce. It comes out of the training division. Community education is where our fire safety and disaster preparedness, reaching out to our community, working with our community, making sure that we are preventing instead of suppressing, is always our motto. Disaster preparedness, emergency operations center, maintaining the emergency operations center in our state of readiness for when that day comes, along with making sure that our staff, city staff, is trained on top of all our CERT members, which we have, as the mayor knows, and others. We have a very robust CERT program that is growing by the day. Community assessment and response and engagement, our care team. And we'll get too far into it. It's on tomorrow's agenda to give you an update for 2024. So that is our mental health crisis response program. Hazardous materials, response, confined space and water rescue services, or other added values that the fire department focuses on to provide protection. values that the fire department focuses on to provide protection for our community day in and day out. Highlights for the past year, one that we're very proud of is the CARE team was honored as Program of the Year by the Alameda County Emergency Services Agency. We were selected out of many other mental health programs, MACRO program in Oakland, Heart Program in Hayward, and other programs throughout the county, Stop the Bleed, and we were selected as the Program of the Year. Negotiated and implemented a department reorganization, upgraded our cardiac monitors, ambulance gurneys, and other advanced life support equipment. We completed a standards of coverage and risk assessment that did an evaluation of needs within our community, also looked at our staffing levels, determined that our staffing levels are what is needed to meet the needs and responses that our community calls for. Our Training Division delivered 21,000, just over 21,000 hours of training. That works out to about 182 hours per employee of training during 2024. Took delivery of our aerial truck, replaced our PFOS safety gear with newer gear that reduces health risk and cancer risk to our firefighters, and we were awarded an Assistance to Firefighter grant to fund the training of eight current EMTs that work for the department to become paramedics within our organization. Fire budget considerations, minimal asks in the fire budget considerations, actually, the total $24,828. And the ask, well, let me back up on the ask. We did focus on boosting our revenue, as was mentioned by the Finance Department. We did look deep into our EMS fees, working with the county to, and we brought on April 2nd, one fee increase, and then we'll be rolling another fee increase recommendation in with the master fee schedule to make sure that we're maximizing our allowable fee, fees that we're allowed to collect under our county contract. In addition to that, we've worked closely with Whitman, which is our billing agency, to make sure that we are collecting all of our public provider ground emergency medical transport fees. We're seeking funding. The one funding we are seeking is a funding to replace our records management system so that we are National Emergency Response Information System compliant. Our current system is an end-of-life and will not support nearest. That is for a cost of $24,828. And then the other request is to provide or increase part-time budget for fire prevention to hire one annuitant, prioritizing community safety as the primary reason. It's also gonna improve our inspection efficiency to make sure, if you recall, part of our standards of coverage said that we could focus more on inspections, and there was not enough inspectors to achieve the inspections that needed to be done. That position will be offsetting in cost through fee generation, and actually will be revenue generating, is our projection on there. So operating budget proposals, again, records management, $24,828, and then $22,000 for a part-time, one-day-a-week staff member to solely be focused on conducting annual life safety inspections within our community. And then the one position we did ask for, our FTE position, was to add an office assistant, Assistant Fire Admin. This was to, we had, at one point, had had an admin tech three that we had moved over to finance to support payroll, which was a great solution to a problem that we were experiencing, but it did leave a vacant seat within Fire Admin. The position, if had been approved, which it wasn't, and we understand why during the fiscal challenges we're currently in, would have assisted with records management, records purging, create depth within our admin division so that when people are off, or if they're injured, or on vacation, or need to take a break, that we had that depth in there. And then just general office and administrative support was the focus of the position. And with that, I'm available for questions.
You'll be available for questions.
There are no questions. Actually, they're holding questions.
Not till I call them.
No questions.
Thank you so much, Chief Looby. And next up is Public Works Director Erin Smith. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Evening.
Members of the council, I'm Erin Smith, Public Works Director. The Public Works Department is the steward of the city's public infrastructure. This includes our underground infrastructure, like our sewer and storm system, the city's roadway network, including sidewalks, traffic signals, and street lighting. We also manage several environmental programs, including our urban forest, zero waste, and clean water program. We oversee the city's parking program and capital improvement program, which we'll speak more about in the next budget workshop next week. We provide operation and maintenance for city building facilities and the city fleet. We administer the special districts, our special districts, including the community facilities district spoken of earlier this evening. I mean, we have a land development and permits division that oversees construction in the right-of-way. Some accomplishments from this past year that we're proud of are completing construction of the Clement Ave Safety Improvement Project, which extended the Cross Alameda Trail, and began construction of the Central Ave Safety Improvement Project, which is underway now. We dredged Lagoon Five of the South Shore Lagoon System and completed cleaning of the associated Bayview Outfall, which allows for maximum water flow through the system for optimal water quality. We converted City Hall West's lawn to a drought-tolerant landscape and completed construction of the first phase of backbone infrastructure, which includes four blocks of new complete streets and Alameda Point's adaptive reuse area. We completed five signal upgrades along the Cross Alameda Trail between Main Street and Wilma Chan, and this helps improve safety by reducing conflicts between drivers and users of the trail. And we launched two programs, one that manages mandated litter reduction on private property, and another that makes getting sidewalk work done easier for property owners. Some Public Works budget considerations are the ongoing maintenance of aging city buildings. This includes general repairs, HVAC systems, replacement of emergency standby generators, and compliance with accessibility standards. In general, we're seeing a rising cost in contractual services. That's for both professional and non-professional services. We continue to transition our city fleet to a zero emissions fleet. And as a low-lying island in the face of climate change, improving our stormwater management system to mitigate the risk of flooding during heavy rainfall and keeping trash out of our local waterways is ever more important. So Public Works has over 30 operating budgets. Only two of them actually sit in the general fund, and that's our streets and our streetlights maintenance divisions. The single item that's recommended here this evening addresses three aspects of those two programs. One is overtime budget for staff for a new on-call program that's designed to increase opportunities for training and experience, increased software costs related to our enterprise asset management system, and uniform costs. And that total ask is $25,000 across the two programs, and it's ongoing in nature. The next two slides are non-general fund adjustments. So I'm the first department presenting non-general fund adjustments. They are still important. So I'll go over them, I'll go over them rather quickly, but I do have two slides. So this first table here, the first line item pertains to our traffic signal operations, which sits in our gas tax fund, and that operation also has an increase in software costs, its proportionate share of our enterprise asset management system, as well as an increase in membership costs for the underground service alert, the call before you dig. We're an entity that gets notified before construction, and we have to essentially pay to be a member. The next three items in the table relate to our sewer fund. The first is adjustments for scheduled sewer fleet replacements. The second item is an increase in contractual services related to generator maintenance, the cost for the county to administer our sewer service charge on the county tax roll, as well as uniform costs. The third sewer item increases projected revenue based upon a scheduled rate increase. Next two items in the table relate to our parking fund. The first is an increase in part-time budget. This will be a third parking technician, part-time parking technician in our parking fund. And the second parking fund item increases projected revenue based upon the forthcoming rollout of paid parking at the Harbor Bay and Seaplane Lagoon Ferry terminals. Public Works manages the Closed Doolittle landfill, and that operation sits in the solid waste surcharge fund. This $9,000 increase is to match our expenditure budget with the cost of regulatory permits. This last item actually spoke about the Transportation Improvement Fund earlier this evening, called the TIF. So as mentioned, the TIF was a special fund that was formed that takes a portion of the general tax revenue within the Harbor Bay Business Park Association and puts that into a special fund that has eligible projects that are intended to mitigate traffic impacts from the build-out of the business park. We have been subsidizing SF Bay Ferry with those TIF dollars, a half a million dollar transfer per year. And now that Regional Measure Three is in place, revenue is going to San Francisco Bay Ferry, so the subsidy is no longer needed and will terminate at the end of this fiscal year. So this actually reduces the expenditure budget in the TIF. It reduces it by 350, leaving a $150,000 budget for security services at the Harbor Bay Ferry The budget proposal within our stormwater fund is for contract cost of living increases, as well as a relocation of a $65,000 annual cost that used to sit in our capital budget related to installing, you know, when you see the storm drain markers that say no dumping flows to the bay, that cost needs to move to our operating budget, so it's an increase in expenditure budget for that, as well as the installation of trash capture devices. Second item in this table is our Facilities Division. Our Facilities Division manages a number of maintenance service contracts, from HVAC to janitorial to backflow testing, and all of those contracts have a scheduled cost of living increase. So this is just to match the expenditure budget for the increased contractual service cost. In addition, we have a number of automated external defibrillators, or AEDs, at various facilities, and various departments historically have managed those, so we're consolidating the operation and maintenance of those under a single contract that'll be managed by our Facilities Division. The budget proposal for Alameda's special financing districts includes cost of living increases for contract services and some increases in expenditure budget for additional tree and landscaping services. These expenditures are funded by available special tax revenue and reflect services that are coordinated with the respective stakeholders within each of the zones. Last two items relates to our urban forest. The first includes an expenditure increase for tree planting and tree treatment, and the second item is a restructuring of revenue transfers into the Urban Forest Fund from various other funds like those special districts that pay for tree maintenance and landscaping work. So we requested two positions. Those two positions would sit in our Streets Maintenance Division, which is one of those operating budgets that is in the general fund. So these positions, although requested, are not recommended because there's not an identified source of revenue to offset the impact to the general fund. Over the past years, Public Works has become a crucial component to the suite of services that our Health and Human Services Division provides the unsheltered population, and maintenance staff from our Streets Division perform regular encampment cleanups, which has taken time away from primary duties such as pothole maintenance, sidewalk repair work, and street sweeping. In addition, as we build out the Cross Alameda Trail and construct new complete streets, additional staff are needed to maintain these important multimodal travelways. In addition to regular street sweeping, complete streets often have bull bouts and protected bike lanes, which require manual sweeping or use of a mini sweeper. These requested positions would form a new clean streets crew dedicated to encampment cleanups, quicker response time to graffiti on public property, and be able to perform the more manual cleaning needed for our newly designed complete streets. That is my presentation.
Thank you so much, Director Smith. Nice job. And Director Long, relax for just a minute. No, thank you. We have come just about to the two-hour mark. We've been meeting for two hours, and I have the two-hour rule that we take a break after two hours. So it is 8:02. Let's all be back at 8:15, and we'll get started. First up will be Director Justin Long for Recreation and Parks. Okay, everyone, stretch your legs. Do whatever you want.
And so the other things that we also focus on and, you know, is the recreation programs. We have surpassed pre-pandemic levels in our programming. So we're really getting pushed to sort of kind of our maximum. We haven't brought back every program, but the programs we do have have really outpaced where we were before, whether it's our aquatics, our summer camp programs, and even our after-school care is thriving. And one of the things we did this year was we got the Ensnail Swim Center daytime access. It's our only pool, so that's been going well. We've been able to program it daily while school is in session with very little impact on the school. And so that's been sort of thriving for our aquatics program. So we primarily focused our budget tension this year on safety and efficiencies and trying to look at how we can maximize, whether it is in park maintenance or in recreation. How do we optimize that? One of the things that we're doing is we're implementing an asset management system and work order system that hasn't existed for parks. You know, we're still Excel sheets and trying to get things done that way. So this is a better way for us to maintain it. And as you guys know, we've been working on our urban forest. The overall cost to take care of trees has gone up. And so we've really had to put some attention just on what is costing to maintain our existing urban forest, specifically for safety, because we don't want anyone to get hurt in our parks. So we've got people who go out and they're constantly looking at them, looking to do tree maintenance, pruning, tree removals, unfortunately, when we have to. And then a part of that, we're also working on sort of the interior infrastructure of the park. So, you know, if you've ever been to Lincoln Park and see it flood, we have to take care of the storm drains and clean them out and make sure we're focusing on that. We also know that we also have the Emma Hood Swim Center going to reopen this year. The city's committed a $7.5 million investment into that pool at Alameda High School. And so as part of our proposal for our rec programs, we're going to have to staff it at some point when that opens. I don't think it's going to be a full year in '26, but it will be for a partial. And then we looked at how we're spending some of our money on contractual services. So we spent a lot of money doing small repairs, like fencing repairs and welding and things like that. So we looked at trying to figure out a way that we could look at our existing budget and then focus on getting a park technician inside the department, and that's going to be our personnel request this year, is to try to get that position in-house so that we're not paying a profit premium or a materials premium for doing all those small repair work in the park that we're currently doing. So to get started, we're going to walk through this chart here. So the Emma Hood operations, we think in the first year will be, like, say, a partial year. So the expenses are not as high as it will cost in, like, the second year. And again, we're trying to be conservative because work has been stalled on that project for a bit. And then our rec programs. So what you're seeing in this is staffing costs. You're seeing training costs. You're seeing, like, for example, our lifeguards, their cost for training has gone up and programs. And you're also seeing just increases in some of our key part-time staffs who actually run our programs, like our, some of our WOW centers and, like, our Tiny Tots program. So some of these staff, in order to retain them, we've had to increase our part-time salaries. We've seen them go up. And again, I said preventative tree care, we're asking for 75 each year. Our park maintenance, as we've been talking about inflation, everything has gone up. So over the last couple of years, that 3.5% to 4% a year that we're hitting is all consumed in sort of this park maintenance chunk of just cost of electricity is up, water, everything. And so we've had to increase that. We're focusing some attention on some big smart irrigation controllers so that we can optimize how the parks are watered and reduce watering and make it smarter. This is a one-time cost, which we think the ROI is about four to five years from installation. So it's a really good investment, you know. And then storm drain maintenance. And then we've looked at our park maintenance district. So just like with Public Works, we take money out of the CFDs to help support. And so we're increasing the expenses out of some of those funds to help the increased cost for park maintenance as they're divided across the system. Now, the good news, all of these get offset by revenue, so, or a lot of them. And so we're going to anticipate a lot of our programs being able to support a lot of these requests, especially for recreation. So Emma Hood, we anticipate, once it gets fully coming up, it'll almost break even once we get it fully operational. When we look at our program fees, every year, we do an assessment, how we compare. I bring the fee study, the fee schedule to you all in December. And those go up about, like, 3% to 5% a year. And so that's about the expense that's going to generate, is about $600,000 a year, just in additional revenue. But we're also looking at, we restructured the aquatics fee structure. And so that in itself is also bringing in additional revenue that's included in that number. And then we've also looked at, like, again, what we're going to cut. So we looked at our professional services, and so there's a reduction here from the general fund for that portion. And then we're also reducing the, that from the CFDs as well, to help pay for that, to get that ongoing cost lower. So that's what we requested this year, is to add a park technician. All in all, the ongoing cost to the city is about $30,000 once we do the reductions to the other two funds, to really pull that person in and be able to do that work more efficiently. And then Estuary Park is anticipated to come online sometime during this biennial budget. And so what we're going to do is we're going to postpone it until the project is getting closer to being done. So at that point, we'll come back for the ongoing or partial maintenance during the biennial project. And I think that's it for me.
All right. Thank you so much, Director Long. Okay, next up, planning, building, and transportation. Welcome, Director Tai.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Alan Tai, Planning, Building, and Transportation Director. So this slide describes in detail our department functions, but I'm going to tell you a little bit of history about the department. So once upon a time, the building department, the building division permit center was housed in the Public Works Department. And the city planning department was its own department. And in the '90s, planning and building merged to become the Planning and Building Department. And as city community needs evolved, we absorbed transportation planning. And then two years ago, our department also grew to incorporate the Sustainability and Resilience Division headed by Danielle Miller. So, but if there was one thing that I wanted you to know about our department, it is that we actually house seven functions. So the name Planning, Building, Transportation doesn't encompass all of the work that we do. We do city planning, we do building permits, inspections, code enforcement. We operate the permit center. We have transportation planners as well as the sustainability and resiliency team. So, and because of that setup, the Planning and Building Fund, or I should say, our department is actually, our budget is separated into three distinct buckets. The largest being the Planning and Building Fund, which under Prop 26, these, this is a function, our planners, building inspectors, permit tax, code enforcement, are funded by permit fees. And under Prop 26, these fees are solely used to fund the efforts to provide that service. So that's why the Planning, Building Fund are separate from the funds that we have for transportation planning, which its revenue comes from county sales tax measure PBB. And of course, a lot of that work is funded by a very complicated grant, by our, applied for by our grants. And then the Climate Action Sustainability Program, the staffing there is funded by the general fund, and then their work is funded through grants. So just, PBT is three big buckets of funds, the largest being Planning and Building. Really proud of the work that the department has achieved in the past year. And we, we achieved significant milestones in housing permitting inspections. We won an award for the Water Shuttle. And just great strides in transportation, planning, and sustainability. For this budget cycle, the department's focus is really on the Planning and Building Fund, primarily because permit fees are, there are ebbs and flows affected by the economy. And in the last couple of years, we saw a significant drop in development activity where our permit revenues used to average roughly six, a little over $6 million a year. And worst-case scenario, we're projecting around $4, $4.5 million, just because we, in the past year, have not seen any developers come to our doorstep. Meanwhile, we are seeing regular home remodel permits coming in. And we are seeing a portion of those permits being driven by insurance companies mandating property maintenance work and upgrades. So this year, our focus on the planning, building fees included doing another fee study to look at ways where we can do business a little bit more efficiently. And so one example is, we realized that we can actually increase our pool of plan check consultants, which would be able to help us be more responsive in permitting processing time, improve customer service. And we're able to do that through, pass through, on-demand plan check fees. So essentially, those are cost-neutral. And so this fee study that we're doing right now is allowing us to identify these sort of opportunities. And we'll be presenting this to council maybe this, sometime this summer when we bring those consultant contracts back. But it will allow us to implement our next iteration of our express plan check program, what we call Express Permits 2.0. In the meantime, our department is achieving salary savings through attrition. In the last couple of years, we've seen a turnover of about 1/3 of our department of 30 employees, primarily due to retirements. And so we are keeping a number of those positions vacant in order to leverage those salary savings. And I think in the next budget cycle, we will rely on some part-time help. But a good reminder is that we have a check-in with the city council on the budget roughly every six months, the next one being mid-year adjustments, so we can always reassess what we're doing. In the meantime, our, our general fund request for planning and building is mainly to align the work that the staff is doing with Prop 26 and ensuring that permit fees aren't covering city costs that permit fees shouldn't be doing. So one example would be for code enforcement. We're seeking roughly $60,000 to continue work on non-permit-related code enforcement, including gas part leaf blowers, flavored tobacco, as well as graffiti enforcement. The, our city planning division continues to work on airport noise monitoring, and that work should not be covered by permit fees. And then we are also seeking $50,000 to offset some of the costs that permit fees have been used to support the city legal support for transportation planning and sustainability. And then finally, we have in the budget $70,000 to support the senior, our very successful senior bus pass program, which we anticipate will be impacted by a roughly 22% fair increase by AC Transit. So as I noted, with the upcoming check-ins with council on the budget, we will revisit some of the needs for the other divisions, including our transportation coordinator position, which is, was not recommended in this budget, but we will continue to monitor the needs for that position. And then I also want to thank Speaker Abbey, who commented earlier about the need for the Civic Spark intern for sustainability program. We're actually able to find part-time funds within our current department budget to continue the work of that part-time employee. Plus, we will have a high school intern supporting sustainability over the summer. So that wraps up the presentation for PBT.
Thank you, Director Tai. Okay, next up is the City Attorney's Office. And remind me in what order we're starting, with Bill Chapin from the rent program.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you very much. So the, among the key functions of the City Attorney's Office is the rent program. We administer the city's rent ordinance. And since 2022, we have operated as a department within the City Attorney's Office, one of our biggest accomplishments in the last year has been carrying out our first annual registration drive to collect registration information. Just some background, that requirement to submit annual registration was written into the rent ordinance. While the program was administered by the Housing Authority, and during the COVID pandemic, a decision was made not to enforce that requirement. After our transition to the City Attorney's Office, we determined that collecting that annual information was essential. It would allow the rent program to provide much more specific and precise information about exactly what rent increases are permitted for each rental unit, and that that would be extremely helpful for landlords and tenants alike. I'm glad to report that we've successfully achieved 87% compliance, and staff continues to work on getting that to keep going upwards. And as a result, more than half of our 13,000 fully regulated rental units here had their registration information updated with updated rents and registering of new tenancies. The, the rent program is a public-facing department with an emphasis on customer service. Staff responds to more than 700 inquiries in an average month. The vast majority of that are landlords who have questions about their responsibilities, and staff helps them through understanding what they need to do in order to remain in compliance. Some of our other accomplishments in last year are directly related to some of the programs that council has approved, including implementing a new policy for landlords to apply for capital improvement plans, providing assistance to tenants who are displaced through no fault of their own from a rental unit that can't be safely occupied, and a staff position that allows for in-house capacity to investigate and issue citations. So for budget considerations, the annual registration requirement did create a lot of new demands on our staff resources. During the initial registration drive, landlords submitted more than 2,500 new tenancies. That's a 147% increase compared to the previous year. And more than 2,300 updated rents, that was a 51% increase. The influx of updated tenancy data also led to having more than 700 rent increases flagged as potentially invalid and in violation of, of our local laws. Now, not all of those 700 turn out to be actual violations, but they all need to be investigated. And resolving them is a time-intensive process that involves staff contacting landlords and getting more detailed rental history information from them. So we are requesting a staff change to convert one of our part-time positions to a full-time position, in part to help deal with that, in part to also deal with some new requirements because of state law that allow us to have local enforcement of state rent control limits. A few things to keep in mind, the rent program is entirely funded by annual program fees that are paid by landlords and tenants, so there is no general fund impact. And these funds can only be cement on rent program operations. And furthermore, since our transition to the City Attorney's Office, we've addressed some structural budget issues. And by limiting expenses and increasing our revenue collection, it's allowed us to finish each year in the black. And because of that, we expect that we can easily absorb the additional cost for this conversion from the part-time to full-time position. What you see here on the workforce change proposal is about, it says about $150,000 per year, but keep in mind that is offset by the, the part-time position. So in terms of the actual impact on the rent program's budget, it's more in the neighborhood of $70,000 to $80,000. And with that, I believe I can hand things off to my colleague from the Prosecution and Public Rights Unit. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And welcome. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm going to pull that down.
Make it yours, as I say.
Good evening, everyone. Some highlights.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Julia Gonzalez. I manage the Criminal Prosecution Unit.
Thank you.
So some highlights from the past year, 2024 was a good year for our unit. We reviewed and touched more cases than we ever have before, including 800 cases reviewed, which represents a 15%, 16% increase over 2023 alone. I'll note that that was also while being short-staffed in the deputy who charges cases for over four and a half months of that year. So good work being done with fewer resources. Likewise, another change that we instituted last year that took effect of January 1st of this year was in response to state legislation now requiring race-blind charging, which means that any deputy who's reviewing a police report needs to have the racial information, not just of the suspect, defendant, but also of any victims or witnesses, removed, which requires redactions. We had to do that somewhat nimbly and internally because while we work very closely with our DA partners in charging, using their software, relying on their staff to actually file cases, the District Attorney's Office is employing a different approach to race-blind charging, where they're going to be using a software that does the redactions somewhat automatically, but that is not, even as of today, yet effective. We made the internal decision to do what we needed to do in our small team to make sure that we were compliant with the state law on day one. And so I'm very proud of us for doing that because it did take a little bit of adjustments. On the fair housing side of the unit, the public rights side of the unit, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the very important housing enforcement action that we took against the owners of Barnham Hill Marina. That took about seven months from start to finish. But in effect, we were seeking to protect the mostly elderly, mostly low-income families, I think over 50 families who are residents there, who are facing absolutely devastating rental increases that would have essentially evicted all of them without any recourse for moving their homes. And so the city did take important action. Fortunately, Alameda Superior Court agreed with us decisively, not only issuing a permanent injunction to prevent future harassment, but also issuing a pretty sizable penalty of over 33, sorry, $335,000 against the Marina owners. So we are very proud of that work on both sides of the unit. We also hired some new staff members to fill existing vacancies. We're really proud of those hires. They are new to us, but not new to prosecution, as well as an experienced staff member. And that is helping us do the work that we care so much about. As far as our budget considerations, I'll start with the second bullet point, which is basically to cover operational costs, like rent and maintaining software that's compliant with state law. CGIS requires that we house our cases in a manner that protects defendant data, such as criminal rap. And so that's a relatively minor ask in comparison to what I really want to talk to you about today, which is the request to launch a victim services function within the prosecution unit. We very nearly secured $900,000 in funding last year. And you better believe that would have been highlight number one, had unfortunately, that funding was eliminated by the current administration. And so we kind of had to go back to square one. We had initially envisioned with that funding securing or hiring two different advocates to perform all of the functions that we would like to have from a victim advocate service within the unit. So we are now seeking other funding. We have already applied to other grant funding, thank you, that actually council member Bowler made us aware of. If that comes through, we certainly will rescind our request from the general fund. But we are trying to mitigate the ask by only asking for funding sufficient for one advocate, one full-time advocate. The advocate position is essentially to perform two critical functions that we believe fall squarely within the strategic priority that council has set of enhancing community safety and services. The primary responsibilities would be, number one, staffing existing cases that we have today, and two, education, training, and community engagement. Starting with the staffing of cases, the first cases that an advocate would staff would involve those involving the most vulnerable victims in our community. And by that, I mean victims of intimate partner violence, domestic violence, which statistically we know primarily affects women, particularly women and other victims who are low-income and have few resources to fall back upon, few people to call upon in difficult times, and those who are confronting housing insecurity, which is also very important or a huge aspect of what the abuse can entail. One of the functions I want to highlight there is because we work within the prosecution realm, the vast majority of the victims that we confront are not willing to work with us. They do not want to participate in the prosecution of their abusers. If we had a victim advocate function, we could reach people that we do not currently reach because our primary goal, our primary focus, is the cases that we have at hand. A victim advocate can go beyond the four squares of a criminal prosecution by reaching out to people and saying, "We understand that you don't want to participate. We still want to help. We still want to connect you to services. We still want to provide and connect and support you without regard of whether or not you're participating in our case." So that would allow us to help people that we can't currently reach. Other populations that we'd be focusing on are elders. Unfortunately, and Chief Joshi probably knows this, can back me up here, we do have some repeat offenders that we just see on repeat, over and over and over again because they have, sorry, repeat victims who are being abused by repeat offenders. And we see the same families in case after case. So we want to be able to staff those victims with someone who can support them just beyond the courtroom. Also cases involving children, cases involving victims of sexual assault. We're also mindful of the times that we are in. We have an immigrant community that is terrified, not just undocumented, but now documented immigrants as well. That was already a population that could be reluctant to participate with any level of government, with anybody in a badge, any function of law enforcement. And even now, they're even less interested in drawing attention to themselves and less likely to participate with us. So we want to be able to reach our immigrant community members, those who do not speak English as a first or even second language. We also want to be able to address LGBTQ trans hate and housing discrimination by supporting those community members. And I know, Councilmember Desog, you have a referral before the council. We believe this position would help us to address those concerns of those, those community members by being able to staff those cases with a victim advocate to provide services and also help us all understand the scope of the problem. So we know that we want to be a city that can stick up for all these people, these communities. And we believe that in order to enhance community services, we can best support them by staffing them directly, as well as a training and education component, which will go beyond what a traditional victim advocate does. This is where we want to expand upon the notion of what victim advocacy can be by working within the community, by providing educational events. We believe we can have synergy with community programming that we already have with the rent program by having our victim advocate staff currently existing workshops that exist and finding ways that we can collaborate and get the, the message out that we are here to support people. So while I went on at length about the position, it is not recommended. We did, we did our best to try to present this in a cost-saving way. The difference between year one and year two is that year one contemplates a half-year services. So that would be delaying services to a January hire date. Obviously, we are eager to provide the best quality of services as soon as humanly possible and would appreciate your support whenever you can offer it to launch this, this program. But that does explain the difference between the two years. And I'll reserve for questions.
Thank you for that. We'll come to questions at the end. And I believe we're going to wrap up your department's report with the city attorney. Thank you so much.
And council, I'd like to end by just sharing.
And council, I'd like to end by just sharing a little bit of, I think, good news, which is that sometimes we, sometimes what's not being requested is just as important as what's being requested. And I'll use the finance director's word that in our operation of the workers' compensation fund, we have been really knocking it out of the park. And we want to be able to find ways to use some of those funds, those savings, to support our city colleagues. And we have heard from many of our city departments that they could use some more safety support. Safety services is one that is lacking currently in the city. And we are looking forward to using some of those savings. And so, there's no budget requests in front of you for that. We're looking forward to using some of those savings to launch a contracted safety services program for our city departments in the coming year. And I'm so pleased to also be working with Alameda Municipal Power General Manager Tim Haynes. We believe that we've been able to find services that specifically has electric utility experience and expertise, which is my understanding from General Manager Haynes, really important. And we will be able to receive also reimbursement from Alameda Municipal Power when services are provided to Alameda Municipal Power for those safety services. So, I'm really pleased to be able to do that.
All right. Thank you for that. So, next up, we have the Alameda Free Library. Library Director Mike Eitner, welcome.
Good evening again, Mike Eitner, Library Director. Let's see if I can figure this out myself. There we go. I'm going to breeze over these key functions. The library is a magical place where people do wonderful things and learn wonderful things. I'll do a couple accomplishments here because I do have a lot to talk about on the next slide. I just want to emphasize that the library welcomed one hundred and eighty-six thousand people last fiscal year. We're probably the second-most-visited city resource outside of parks, recreation, and parks. And people checked out seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty items. That's almost nine for every person who lives here. So, the folks love the library, and we are very happy to continue to provide library services to them. So, the library's budget considerations and associated operational changes are driven by data. The primary focus is on improving staff and community safety and creating a consistent schedule that provides opportunities to expand programming. Just as some context, Oakland and San Leandro spend more per capita on libraries than the city of Alameda does. The city of Alameda ranks fourth out of eight library systems in Alameda County when it comes to per capita spending. Based on two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three figures from the California State Library, the Hayward Public Library has twelve full-time equivalent employees more than the Alameda Free Library, operates one fewer location, and is open two thousand hours less per year. So, the first thing we're focusing on is hiring more full-time staff for capacity and consistency. The library has an over-reliance on part-time employees for operations. And when we operate two shifts, when we're open from ten to eight, that over-reliance is exacerbated. From January two thousand twenty-three to March two thousand twenty-five, one library services manager hired eighteen part-time employees. That is, just for your general reference, the library has around thirty-five to thirty-eight part-time employees. So, in two years, it was more than, pretty close to a fifty percent turnover rate. That turnover rate leads to a lack of capacity and a lack of our ability to really move forward with expanded initiatives or to try new services when we're really just trying to keep momentum. When you're continually hiring people, you're just training them on the basics, and you're not really getting anywhere. Another thing that we're focusing on is improving safety for community and the staff. Libraries are one of the last great open spaces in the community. You can come to the library, and you're not expected to buy anything or to, you can just be there. With that comes challenges. We see an increase in interactions with folks who are having behavioral issues, people who are in crisis and who need services. And additionally, we see a lot of folks who are unhoused who come to the library. And all of the folks who come to the library coexist in this one space. Additionally, we have some safety issues that we would like to address through this budget. At the branches, there are times when staff members are left alone. There's a single staff member at the library, just because we do not have the capacity to have someone there every hour that the library is open. So, this budget request includes unarmed security guards, a social worker, and a greater number of staff in the building. And we believe that this together will increase safety for staff and for the public. We're also creating a consistent schedule by realigning hours to when the library is most used by the community. Based on six months of door count data, the six to eight P M hours are their least-used hours. At the Bay Farm and West End libraries, the average from seven to eight P M can be as low as five people coming into the building during that hour. It is slightly higher at the main library, but the average from seven to eight P M is around eleven people. Ninety-two percent of the people who come to the library, come to attend programs, excuse me, ninety-two percent of the people who attend programs at the library are kids, teens, and families. Realigning our hours and increasing staffing will allow the library to offer more programs for families and children, both at the library and in the community. It is simply not cost-effective for us to operate from six to eight P M because it requires us to be open for two shifts, which, like I said earlier, exacerbates our staffing challenges. An example of what we're hoping to do with the increased capacity of the additional staffing that is in the proposed budget is we would like to have regular visits to daycare centers throughout the city. Right now, we just simply don't have the capacity to do that because we're just trying to keep the doors open and making sure that we have people there. With these realigned hours, what we can, what we get with the realigned hours is a capacity. We get more depth, and that depth will hopefully allow us to get out into the community a little bit more. Will certainly allow us to offer more programs in the library. Between all three libraries, the whole system will be open one additional hour per week. So, it really is a realignment. It is not a reduction in hours. It's just focusing the hours when our community uses us the most and reflecting the services that they use when they come to the library. So, you'll see the recommended budgets here is a security guard, the security guard at the main library for every hour that the library is open. There's a reduction in part-time staff. As we increase our capacity with full-time employees, we can reduce the amount of money we spend on our part-time staff. Additionally recommended were two librarians, one for each of the branches at Bay Farm Island, at the West End Library, those that will help resolve the staffing there where we leave people alone. We're going to go down to one shift. There'll be three people. We'll have a situation where there was at least two staff members in the building at all time. In the second year, we add a social worker to the main library. Again, this is just to help increase safety and capacity as we see a lot of folks who need services and assistance. They can help library staff with that and also refer people for services. Additionally, we're going to add a library technician at the main library. This is partially offset through the transfer of an IT systems analyst to the IT department. Currently, the library pays seventy-five percent of the staff member's salary. Shifting this to IT makes sense. IT then can provide support to the library centrally through that department rather than having a dedicated library IT staff member. The one position that was not recommended was a librarian at the main library, again, just trying to increase our capacity and be where the community wants us to be, which is outside of the library.
Thank you very much. All right. Can we move on to finance next? Is that you, interim Finance Director? Yeah, come on back.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Ross McCarthy, Acting Finance Director. I'm just going to fly through this one if I could. Some of the finance's key functions include accounting, the accounts payable and receivables function, budget, cash management, payroll, and our internal mail service. That's some small lettering up there, but what I'm going to share with you, some accomplishments from this past year. The Finance Department has been very busy. Just a few of our accomplishments include issuing the city's financial report for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four in-house. This is our first time doing this. Doing so has reduced overall audit findings, made the statements more timely, and increased staff involvement and understanding for training and succession planning. We've released our first popular annual financial report. This statement is an easy-to-understand summary of the city's financial health for the public. We'll be visiting this again tomorrow night's council meeting. But what I love about this one is the annual comprehensive report is about three hundred pages or so, and not a whole lot of interest. Some very dense financial work in there. However, our PAFR, or our Popular Annual Financial Report, is sixteen pages, nice and colorful, some of the highlights of the fiscal health of the city. We have received the GFOA award for fiscal year twenty-three and expect the same for fiscal year twenty-four. This award is a recognition of excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. In a historic first for the city, the city has transitioned to a new banking partner. We've secured improved pricing, services, and financial tools to better support the city's current and future needs. We have updated the master fee schedule to enhance cost recovery. We've boosted business license revenue with our HDL partnership, implemented new processes that, to date, have generated an additional four hundred and fifty thousand through improved discovery and compliance efforts. We've adopted a citywide collection policy, which reduces revenue loss while offering payment flexibility in alignment with the city's commitment to public assistance. And last but not least, we have handled high transaction volumes of both vendor invoices of roughly two hundred and twenty-two thousand and nearly thirteen thousand payroll checks. At this time, the Finance Department believes we can handle increased vendor costs and inflationary pressures within our current allocations.
Thank you for that. Base reuse and economic development director, Abby Thorne Lyman, welcome.
Hi, good evening. The Base Reuse and Economic Development Department has activities that I see falling into three key categories. One is citywide economic development, which is focused on implementing a variety of programs that foster economic growth and vitality throughout the city. And you heard all about it about a month ago from manager Dwayne Dollman. In addition, we oversee asset and property management for city-owned properties that are not used for city facilities. So, public works and ARPD, of course, maintain buildings that are used for city functions. But we oversee operations, maintenance, and investment of major capital improvements in Alameda Point buildings, State Lands Trust buildings and properties, as well as other city buildings that don't fall in either of those categories. And then, we oversee base reuse in general, leasing, sales of land, and development. So, in terms of over the last fiscal year, we are very pleased to have commenced with the demolition and site work for the West Midway and Reshape residential and affordable housing development, as well as the backbone infrastructure work on West Midway between Main Street and Pan Am that is associated with that. We've brought eight leases and lease amendments to council. We closed on the sale of property to the Alameda Food Bank, and we are very close to bringing you a recommendation on the sale of another building, Building Ninety-two. And as you all know, we're hot in negotiations on a possible development in the Enterprise District, which you'll hear about more very soon in the next couple of months. And then, on the economic development side, we're very pleased that a private entity on private land was able to break ground on a two hundred and twenty-nine-room hotel that we anticipate being completed and ready for occupancy in spring of two thousand twenty-six, hopefully bringing important transient occupancy tax to the city. You all heard about the Park and Webster Street vacancy strategy. And we are implementing the Rise Up Alameda Two-Year Guaranteed Basic Income Pilot Program as well. The Economic Development Department oversees a variety of different grant programs that support our small businesses, as well as our nonprofits and cultural arts partners. And we launched a variety of small business technical assistance programming, supporting over sixty businesses over the first three In terms of budget considerations, I think it's important for everybody to know that Alameda Point revenues stay in Alameda Point. As you heard earlier tonight, we also administer State Tideland's Trust properties, which are both within Alameda Point, as well as along the estuary and along the bay. And that includes the Grand Marina, the Fortman Marina, the Belena Bay, as well as a portion of Ensignal Terminals, and a variety of residential docks for those people who live along the estuary and have their own docks. So, we administer all of those leases. Those revenues all stay within a separate fund of the general fund. And then, we do oversee a number of properties that are just scattered throughout the city as well. So, one of the key highlights here is the need for some additional revenue, which we really consider to be an investment. And you will see a return on investment in the form of higher lease revenues. We administer the cell tower leases throughout the city. We believe that the vast majority of those leases are below market, and most of them have expired and are on month-to-month. So, we are looking for a small amount of money, thirty thousand dollars, of general fund money to help us administer the lease negotiations for all of those cell towers. As well, we have all three of the Marinas, Grand, Fortman, and Belena Bay. They are on long-term leases that expire in two thousand twenty-nine, and all three will be renegotiated in this coming fiscal year. So, we're seeking some additional funds to help us administer those. And a lot of those residential docks also are on expired leases that are month-to-month. And we believe that all of these leases can be brought up to fair market value. So, we're looking for a little bit of money from the general fund. Currently, there is no general fund money to support real estate negotiations throughout the non-Tidelands and Alameda Point portions of the city, as well as the Tidelands funds for those purposes. And we are seeking one position that would be funded out of the Alameda Point and Tidelands funds, which is to add an administrative management analyst. The reason for this position is that we have found over the last year that we have been embarking on a lot of deferred maintenance and repair out at Alameda Point, including the replacement of a two-point-eight-million-dollar roof on Building Twenty-four, and the surprise and emergency demolition of Building One Fourteen and now Building One Sixteen. Our assets have come to the end of their useful life in many cases, and we need to be making major investments in these. And that requires project management work. So, one of my staff has been leading that project management work. But what has ended up happening is that because we are focusing on that, we have a number of these other negotiations I have mentioned that really need a little bit of additional support. So, this individual would help us to increase the pace at which we're able to negotiate all of these leases. And a lot of these smaller leases take just as much time as the big leases, just as much effort, and will result in a return. So, we estimate that with our cell tower lease negotiations, if we're able to get them all renegotiated to fair market value, we could be generating an additional two hundred thousand dollars in revenue to the city that is not accounted for in this budget. And we estimate that at Alameda Point, we do have a number of leases expiring, and if we can pick up the pace, that could increase our annual revenue out there by two hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, just by simply moving faster. So, that's what this position is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then we come to City Manager's Office and Assistant City Manager, Amy Waldridge.
Yes, thank you very much. So, I'm going to be tag-teaming this with our Communications Director, Sarah Henry. And also, just wanted to note that our, thank you, Housing and Human Services Manager, Simone Falls, is here and available for questions later. So, overall, City Manager's Office provides overall direction, leadership, and communications for all city departments. We also have direct oversight of the Housing and Human Services Division. I'm going to pass it to Communications Director, Sarah Henry.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, Sarah Henry, Communications Director for the city. And I get to share our accomplishments from the City Manager's Office. With Legislative Affairs, we adopted the twenty-five, twenty-seven legislative agenda, which we used last year to support around fifty bills. We drafted new legislation to protect Alameda Point businesses from frivolous lawsuits and submitted four new requests for congressional project funding. Communications, we've been navigating some challenging media relations issues, updated the city's website, increased city visibility on projects and programs, including Water Shuttle, Alameda Point and Spirits Alley, Restaurant Week, Shop Local, and Disaster Preparedness, and increased efforts to promote local businesses on social media and through our other outreach and advertising. We updated our strategic plan. We performed interdepartmental staff support and training, negotiations with seven bargaining units, fire department reorganization, and moved two hundred and sixteen people into housing, as well as filled below-market-rate housing units. filled below-market rate housing units.
So in terms of our budget considerations, our emergency supportive housing, that's a program that is for houses out at Alameda Point with wraparound supportive services with the goal to move people into permanent housing. We have two houses for a total of 12 people, plus two family houses. This program was created and operated with one-time American Rescue Plan Act funds. Those funds will be fully expended as of this December 2025. And so these funds, what we did is requested funds for half of the first fiscal year and then full funding to operate the program for the second fiscal year in order to continue this service. One thing that's key about this program is by having it be all local funds, we have direct control over who gets placed in those, unlike other programs like Dignity Village, where the people are placed through the county system. We have complete control over this, which helps us manage, directly manage our services. We also, in this budget, are proposing to move our homeless mobile outreach team in-house with a full-time case manager position, as well as existing part-time caseworkers that we have. In order to fund this, we would not renew the Village of Love agreement for, they are currently providing our mobile outreach team services. That agreement expires in September. Village of Love would continue to provide our services for the emergency supportive housing. They manage that program, as well as they manage on a separate contract our day center and safe parking program. So they would continue to manage those. This would only be replacing the mobile outreach team work that they do with us. The reason we're proposing to move it in-house is we believe it will be much more cost-effective, and also we can then manage, directly manage the level of service and quality, and it'll be a more seamless program. This full-time position also will oversee, help oversee other direct service programs, such as the day center, emergency supportive housing. And what that will do is create more staff capacity for our manager and our program managers to focus on other potentially revenue-generating efforts for state and federal fund reporting compliance, seeking grants, and fundraising. In addition to the city manager budget considerations, the mayor is seeking additional part-time administrative support, as the complexity of her schedule and needed support has grown with her additional leadership roles on regional boards.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah. So in terms of, I've gone over most of these, I just want to add that the ADA van, which is a one-time cost that's on here, that will support the in-house homeless mobile outreach team. A critical component of this type of work is to take people to the DMV and other appointments to help them get vital documents that is required to get housing. And currently, it's very challenging, in particular, to transport people that have significant mobility challenges, and this van will allow us to do that. As I mentioned, I already spoke to the other issues, requests. I lastly wanted to talk about the upgrading the office assistant to admin tech three in Housing and Human Services. This upgrade is because this position's work scope has expanded. As HHS responsibilities and programs have grown over the last two years, the position now includes managing and paying complex invoices for CDBG and other funding sources, as well as assisting with budget management. I wanted to, and then I've already talked, the program specialist two is the full-time position that will manage the in-house mobile outreach program. In terms of regarding the senior management analyst, while it's not recommended, it is greatly needed for supporting the scope of work being provided by our department. Currently, the city manager and myself, we each supervise six departments. In addition to managing high-profile interdepartmental projects, this position would provide much-needed capacity for analytical support, data collection, policy development, such as for sponsorships that could raise revenue, as well as tracking implementation of the city council strategic plan. And just want to leave you with it, research shows that comparable cities have more staff in the city manager's office. Others that are our size have a deputy city manager or an assistant to the city manager and management analyst, so in terms of comparable cities. And we have one more piece that we want to pass over back to the Communications Director.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Glad to be back. I wanted to explain the media and communication coordinator position. The city is understaffed when it comes to communications compared to other Bay Area cities. And the work that I do generally falls into four main buckets. We have like media relations, external communications about city projects and programs, coordinating city events, there's internal communications, legislative affairs and interagency coordination, and then special projects, like the strategic plan, our DEIB program implementation, sister cities ballot measure outreach, and education. And the ability to communicate generally has changed dramatically in the last 10 years. And my request is to prioritize public communication so that we can increase the access and cadence of our communications with residents and businesses. For a little more than a year, we've had a part-time person support these efforts with a focus on business promotion. And then this request was to increase the part-time position to a full-time coordinator that would help implement a few of the strategic plan projects, including investing in expanding media program that's accessible to all, creating economic development videos and educate residents on the city's efforts to attract new businesses and promote Alameda Point, and implementing the citywide communications plan, which offers concrete tactics to increase outreach that we do not have the staffing to do today. So adding the coordinator position would create depth in a division of one and allow me to implement other strategic plan projects, including expanding our AC Alert system and internal training so that we can reach more people in a disaster, expand disaster preparedness communications, explore revenue measures, and in particular, a possible infrastructure bond or public safety tax, and conduct a biannual resident and employee satisfaction survey. And just in addition, of course, we're headed into a very uncertain time, but it's also critical that we remain very diligent working with our state and federal lobbyists, just to keep Alameda strong. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that's it for the city attorney's office, and we move on to human resources. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Noelle White, Acting Human Resources Director. There we go. So the Human Resources Department performs a variety of critical people operation functions for the city, including labor relations and negotiations. We have nine represented groups, two unrepresented groups, and two employee contracts. As you are familiar with, we are in active negotiations with seven of the nine represented groups currently. Employee relations, Human Resources acts as a guide to sensitive employee situations and performs investigations. Recruitment and retention, we've been very, very busy in this area, and I'll speak more to that on our next slide. Employee benefits and administration, we're very proud to offer a comprehensive benefit package to our city staff with a variety of medical plans to choose from, as well as deferred compensation and employee assistant program. Leave management, this includes personal and protected leave, such as Family Medical Leave Act and California Family Rights Act. Classification and compensation administration, we did recently launch a pretty extensive class spec revision, class specification, excuse me, revision project, and I'll speak more to that on the next slide. We also perform disability management, training and development, policy and procedure maintenance and development. Most recently, we rolled out the workplace violence prevention policy this past July. And we also recently revised our heat and illness prevention policy as well. So we are a small, but we are a mighty department. We've been very, very busy. We've completed over 75 recruitments, processed 122 full-time appointments, including 65 new hire appointments, 23 part-time to full-time appointments, two rehires, one transfer, and 31 promotional appointments. We've also been busy with our bargaining partners, three of them. The first one being the MCEA Group, which is the Management Confidential and Employee Association. We successfully negotiated an amendment to their memorandum of understanding to provide callback and standby provisions in order to provide 24/7 IT support to all city departments and staff. We also negotiated an amendment to both the International Association of Firefighters' Local 689 Unit, as well as the Alameda Fire Chiefs Association for the Fire Reorg, which aim to modernize operations, improve efficiency, provide promotional opportunities, and align with industry standards, all within the existing budget. I did mention previously the implementation of a citywide classification specification revision project, aiming to create class specs that are ADA compliant and inclusive. Very proud of this project, a little biased, just because I did facilitate it. This is being performed in-house by human resources staff, looking to revise 189 active class specs for the city, which is quite a lift. We have provided supervisor trainings on a variety of topics, including harassment, discrimination and retaliation, performance management, protected leaves, wage and hour, law compliance, disability management, communication, and recruitment. We've been performing these trainings both in-person and virtually, with the latter being recorded, so that our staff can refer to them at later dates, or if they were unavailable for the training. We also provided citywide trainings on conflict resolution, as well as employee wellness. We've partnered with our somewhat new EAP provider concern to help roll out these trainings and provide them to staff in a virtual capacity. And then we've also facilitated the resolution of numerous sensitive employee relation issues and investigations. So we didn't have any budget considerations that were recommended. We did ask for, and I do want to plug this, we did ask for one safety officer. Our city attorney did state this earlier, we do lack a comprehensive safety program. And it's not only a need, it's very much a desire. So we did put forth a workforce request for a safety officer, as the duties are currently divided up amongst several staff members, including part-time assistants. And it makes for a very challenging, if not impossible, mission to create an effective and efficient safety-wide program. As many of my colleagues have stated today, understanding the economic position of the city, as well as some contracted services, we realized it was not a recommended workforce request. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next up is IT. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Demetrius Kaganpan, IT Director. I'm here to talk about the IT department's budget. First off, the IT department supports all the technology needs of the city, ranging from cybersecurity all the way down to mobile device management and everything in between. Some of the highlights of the accomplishments I'd like to discuss are related to our initiation of the Microsoft 365 migration. This migration to the Microsoft 365 platform allows for greater communication, collaboration, and increases the ability to perform tasks and increases productivity in general. Also, throughout the year, we've increased our cybersecurity posture as well, through solutions, as well as practices and policy implementations. Also, we've upgraded our five-year IT strategic plan as well. In terms of the budget considerations, we have several security solutions in place already. However, each solution serves a different purpose. So what we were looking for is a way to have everything under a single pane of glass and to be able to aggregate all that information in order for it to be, to allow us to have a greater monitoring of our system. So what we did was, we were asking for additional funding for a solution that provides security operations center activities, which is a 24-by-7, 365-day solution that will help monitor our network to ensure that, to identify any anomalous activity, or most importantly, any malicious activity, and using the data that it acquires from the other security solutions that we already have in place. So we're looking to add that to our portfolio of security solutions because of the fact that not only does it aggregate all of our security solutions and its logging and all of the statistics that it collects, but also by virtue of the fact that it's 24-by-7, it really helps because we have that visibility all the time. What happens is cities like the City of Newark, City of Hayward, they are already customers of this product, Arctic Wolf. And in speaking with the IT management of the City of Hayward, they've credited Arctic Wolf with being one of the key reasons they were able to recover from their massive attack back in July 2022. So we feel that with that type of solution to fortify our other cybersecurity tools, that it would help us be able to recover, identify, detect all the major tenants of cybersecurity as a whole. In addition to those budget considerations, we're looking to transfer also two IT positions from different departments as well. The first one being from the library. As Director Eitner mentioned earlier, we have an IT analyst in the library at the moment, serving the IT specifically, the IT functions, I should say, for the library. But by moving the library IT staff member over to the IT department, we're able to leverage his skills because he has a very, very high level of cybersecurity in his background, and is continually learning every day. So by having that dedicated cybersecurity person helping us drive our cybersecurity programs, also help us with our AI initiatives and whatnot, you know, it helps to have that type of dedicated personnel that can help us bring that in alignment with our other objectives. As far as the planning, building, and transportation IT staff member, we're looking to centralize IT in general, because right now, this particular staff member is performing functions in the planning and building and transportation department. However, by moving that person to the IT department, we're able to provide even more services to the city by leveraging their skills also. So that way, we'll be able to centralize operations in that sense, and also we'll be able to increase standardization, consistency, and more importantly, offer additional services. As I mentioned, Arctic Wolf is the product I mentioned earlier. It is a two-year contract at this point, and it is, like I mentioned, it came very highly recommended from the City of Hayward. And in terms of the workforce change proposals, this is what it would cost for the two analysts to come over to the IT department. As Director Eitner mentioned also earlier, the city, the IT department is already paying 25% of the IT library, the library IT analyst's position. With this request, we'll be asking for the full 100% at that point.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is the city clerk.
Yes.
City Clerk Laura Welsinger.
I am going to copy Director Eitner and talk about the magic of the city clerk's office, because that was so good. So we perform all of the regular functions of the city clerk's office, supporting the council, public records, elections, bare political practices, commission compliance. And then our extras are passports, civil marriage ceremonies, and of course, the real magic of the cable studio staff. And we also get to do some extra transparency with our Sunshine Ordnance and Staffing, the Open Government Commission. Okay. This past year, we conducted an election, we transferred to hearing officer for Sunshine Ordnance complaints, we updated the records retention schedule, and we really performed a lot more marriages. And we have a very, very full passport schedule. We're always fully booked, and people are always begging us, "When can we get in?" So it's still in very high demand. And then the city has also continued hybrid meetings, which a lot of other cities have gone away from and/or are doing on a very much more reduced scale. And we've been an advocate for keeping that. And at this time, we didn't submit any requests.
All right, thank you. And let me see, was that our last? Yes. That would make the city clerk's department the smallest department.
Yes.
If, it's all right with you, Madam City Manager, we do have another public comment that was submitted. So before we go to our summary of workforce requests and then back for council, if we could call on that speaker, or speakers, whatever it is.
Yeah, so it's one, Charles Linsen.
Ah, in-house.
Yes.
Welcome, Speaker Linsen. Come on up. You don't have to run.
Hello.
Hello.
Honorable members of the city council, my name is Charles Linsen. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak today. And I want to begin by expressing deep appreciation to the ARPD, Justin Long, and his staff, who are very responsive to our contacts. I just want to share some numbers. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Alameda Pickleball. And currently, we have over 1,000 people on the mailing list, as well as we have a 2,000-member women's group that play regularly at the Lydecker on Monday women's group that play regularly at Lydecker on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. We have dozens of players that play daily at both locations, at Lincoln Park and Lydecker. And those include women, seniors, minorities. And for all those people that play, I don't know if you know it, but there's only, we only take up the space of two tennis courts. So there's one tennis court space which fits four pickleball courts, so one each in Lydecker and at Lincoln Park. Pickleball is a unique and inclusive sport. It's affordable, easy to learn, you can pick it up in one day, unlike tennis, which can take months and pricey lessons to pick up. And one more thing is, I wanted to highlight that we only have one single lighted public pickleball court, which is at Lydecker on the East End. And if you drive by Bay Farm Library, you'll see it's packed at night. So continuing that, the other options for citizens would be if they would go to the private courts, which is either the Harbor Bay Club or the Hub, and that requires at least $130 or more, you know, monthly memberships. So the current challenges that we have, we, you know, of course, it would be good if we get more locations. We are excited for the four planned new courts at Estuary Park, and we think that's a great step forward. So finally, I just want to say that San Leandro opened, they had six new courts, and so we hope that, you know, you continue to invest in pickleball. And thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
No. And the other speaker who left was also about pickleball. He is not here.
All right. Got it. Thank you. Okay, well, we'll close public comment at this time and we'll go on to summary of workforce requests. Are you doing that, City Manager?
Yeah, we presented this just at the end, just because there was a lot of individual slides. We don't have to go over this again. It was just to have this as a reference to, so if there were questions about what the requests were, which ones were recommended, we just want, and what the offsets are for all of them. If you go back to that one more slide, the total for general fund is, with all the offsets, is about $100,000 of additional staff costs. So we're able to really minimize the impact of the general fund, but still add and upgrade several positions. And then the next slide is just the non-general fund. So just wanted you to have that as a reference. And I think that's it. So we're happy to open it up for additional questions and discussion.
So what I'm going to do, because we've now come to the end of the presentations, and by the way, thank you, everybody who presented and everyone who supported the presentations. I don't know about the rest of you, but I just always feel so proud of my city when I listen to all that's going on. I mean, I know a lot of it, but sometimes it's just nice to have that reminder. So what I'm going to do is mix up the order a little bit in speaking. We're going to start with, to my right, with Councilmember Bowler, go on to Vice Mayor Pryor, Councilmember Jensen, back around to Councilmember Dayshog, and I'll wrap it up. So it's your questions, it's your comments, and we might do a little bit of back and forth dialogue among us. It doesn't, I don't want this to just be, okay, it's your turn to speak, your turn to speak. We've got a lot to discuss here. But why don't you kick us off if you would please, Councilmember Bowler?
Sure. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much to all the city staff that's here and all the really hard work that went into everything. We really benefited from it. And, you know, this is not easy decisions, but you definitely are making it easier on us. So that's great and we appreciate that. I think I can speak for everyone here about that. And yeah, so I want to keep my portion right now brief, sort of in the spirit of the mayor's suggesting maybe there be some conversation. I do think that the proposals are very strong. This is uncertain economic times, but we are a city that's quite fiscally sound and strong. We're really lucky that we've made some good decisions over the years, so we are in the position to be in a good space right now. I think that the, one of the main focuses of the overall was on public safety. I would encourage us to look at a couple different options there that are a little bit more robust in terms of the officer recruitment so that we can have a little extra breathing room in the event that some of our attrition is continuing to be an issue. Because I think that the community, you know, recognizes that this is the biggest part of the city's budget and it's an important time for public safety to just make sure we're at the forefront of keeping Alameda the wonderful, safe place that it is. So I would encourage that. I do like the willingness to consider going into some of the monies. It's a substantial amount of money. It's basically half of the, not the reserves, but the...
Excess fund balance, yep.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that there's, we have so many opportunities to bring in income in Alameda. We have, you know, there's already, you can see so much creativity in the current budget plan and some things that are forecast, but with Alameda Point, some of our assets throughout the community, I mean, we have some opportunities to get creative and get more aggressive about bringing in more revenue. So to take some risk in these, in these times, in terms of using some monies, that's what they're for. That's what they were designed for. And it's not going into our reserves, our 25% reserves. So I would definitely welcome the opportunity to discuss any of these ideas with my colleagues. And thank you.
I'm going to just jump in with a contrarian position on the, just kind of throwing caution to the wind and jumping into our excess, excess reserves. Am I using the right term?
We call them excess fund balance.
Excess fund balance.
We're just trying to differentiate them from our reserves.
I get it. Yeah, excess fund balance. Okay, fair enough. What I want to say is that I have been in the last month at many meetings from the state level, actually, I was in Washington DC part of last week, and so I can bring you some grim and a little bit of hopeful news about transportation funding. But I had the chance to hear President Protam of the California Senate, Mike McGuire, recently, and one of his colleagues, Senator Tim Grayson, talked to the League of California Cities, East Bay Division. What they say, what they said in DC is, this is, where we are now is unsettling. It's going to get worse before it gets better. I love being a person who sees the glass as half-full. I love the idea of being creative and aggressive about bringing in more revenues. But this is at a time when people's 401K plans are, you know, shrinking, that people are living paycheck to paycheck more than they ever have. People are getting laid off. So I love that we have this money, but it takes a long time to build up the reserves, and these aren't the reserves, but we've got those in there. It doesn't take any time at all to blow through them. And we know what we know sitting in front of us today. We don't know what we don't know. We don't know what's around the corner. And I don't know about the rest of you, but every time I open the news apps on my phone in the morning, and I can only look at the news in the morning, you just don't know what's out there, what cockamamie idea has been floated next. But this is real. This is real. I was back in DC, I met with federal employees who are now out of jobs. And so I think we do have to be creative, and I really applaud the city manager and her staff for bringing those approaches. But when this money is gone, it's going to take us a long time to bring it back. So I think it's a matter of prioritizing, of triaging. It's not, we're not making our Christmas list and, you know, oh, we've got this money here, so let's just spend it. I, I think I'd like to see us, not I think, my preference would be to get us through the first year of this two-year budget, be a bit on the cautious side in our spending. At the end of this fiscal year, if, or the new fiscal year, if things turned around, if, you know, the Fed chair reduces interest rates, if properties start moving again, then I think we can take another look. But I just feel like we're approaching a blind curve on a highway road or, you know, a mountain road. I used to live in the mountains and you don't, you don't want to take those too fast because you just don't know what's at the other, at the other side if somebody's driving in your lane. It's just, anyway, it makes me nervous, but that just might be my nature. But like I said, I've been listening to people a lot smarter and a lot more experienced than I am. But I do appreciate your input. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, no, I'd be curious to hear what the other council members are thinking.
For sure. And we'll have some back and forth.
Thank you.
Okay, on to you, Vice Mayor Pryor.
I was going to say, I appreciate wanting to be cautious because we don't know and a lot of what's happening is unprecedented. But my first thought, thinking about the upheaval, was actual safety. And I thought about, anyway, I was thinking about the, you know, getting more staffing for the police department and then also for the victims' advocate. Because I think in times like this, people, crime does go up, domestic violence goes up. And so if we're not going to prioritize it this, this year, I definitely think both of those things should be at the top of the list. That's, yeah, that's, and I just want to, and also just, Councilmember Bowler said, this was amazing, all the hard work and all the information. So I just want to say thank you also.
And just to be clear, I agree completely with you, Vice Mayor. I want to see a way that we fund those two extra police positions and the victims' advocate. I think that goes a long way, and I'll talk more about that when I come back. But I wasn't saying just dig in our heels and don't spend anything. I'm just saying, this isn't the time to be too, we need to, I think we need to hold our wallets a little bit close to the vest right now. Okay, that was all for you, Vice Mayor, for now? And we can do it back and forth, too?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen.
First of all, I have a couple of questions from the presentations. My first question is for, is regarding the, both the storm drain and tree maintenance. There were line items in both the ARPD budget as well as the Public Works budget, and I'm wondering why these programs can't be combined or are they combined and just being funded from...
Would Public Works Director Aaron Smith like to come up and we can have a duet?
Well, I can, I'm, you know, Justin Long here. The parks are responsible for taking care of all the trees within the parks, and we share a contract with Public Works. So it's one service that does the work. We're just responsible and funded out of different categories, but we're not paying any extra for it. It's just one department's responsible for one portion and the other department's responsible for the other.
Okay. And that's true of the storm drains as well?
Correct.
They're just line items in the different departments, but they're going to the same contract?
Or same activity, yes.
Great.
Yep.
Okay. That was a quick question.
Director Smith, did you want to add anything to?
No, I think, I think Director Long.
Okay. My next, my second question is for libraries.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you everyone for the presentation. The library, definitely, I appreciate all of the recommendations and all of the work being done at our libraries. What I wanted to ask is, you mentioned several times, and it's in the recommendation, that the library hours be adjusted, but they won't be reduced. So can you explain if they're not going to be open in the evening? Are they going to be open earlier or what are going to be the hours that you're proposing?
Yes. So our current hours, I may screw them up because they're very confusing, but I will do my best. The main library is currently open Monday and Tuesday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Wednesday, 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 10:00 to 5:00, and Sunday, 12:00 to 5:00. Under the realigned hours, the main library will be open 10:00 to 6:00, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 to 5:00, Friday, Saturday, and 12:00 to 5:00 on Sunday. Bay Farm and West End libraries currently open 12:00 to 8:00, excuse me, 10:00 to 8:00 Monday, Tuesday, 12:00 to 5:00 on Wednesday, 10:00 to 5:00 on Thursday, closed Friday, open 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, closed Sunday. They will both operate 10:00 to 6:00, Monday through Thursday, closed Friday, open 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday.
Okay, I'll remember all that.
Right.
But that's, no, that's very helpful. And so then my other, my follow-up question to that is, do you anticipate, because the evening hours, as you mentioned, aren't often used so much by library patrons, but they are used by public users or for public events, et cetera. So will that be impacted?
Yeah, there certainly will be an impact to those folks who come to the library and stay at the library all day, all day. Currently, the main library is open 54 hours a week. In the realigned hours, it'd be open 53 hours a week, so it's just one hour less. Obviously, those folks who come to the libraries and seek shelter during hot times and cold times, there will be an impact that we close at 6:00. We're really trying to focus on when we are used the most and where we get the biggest, where we see the biggest draw of people, and that is in the morning from 10:00 to 12:00. As to the evening meetings, yes, there will be an impact on the groups meeting at the library after 6:00 PM. It's, we have a small, dedicated group of people that do meet then, but it is not, it won't have a massive impact on users. Obviously, those groups will need to find a new place to meet, and that includes the library board, who meets at 6:00 PM on Wednesdays every other month.
And yeah, I also know that some of the BEAT meetings happen in the evenings at the West End Library and Bay Farm Library.
Yes. And I, yeah, I can't remember exactly when the BEAT meetings happened then, but the BEAT meetings at the main library, one was on a Saturday morning, and the other one was at, finished before 6:00 o'clock. Yes, there would need to be adjustments there. Mostly, I think, weekend meetings are generally when we see a lot of people come into the library. Sunday is an incredibly busy day for the library, even though we're only open five hours and only one location is open.
And speaking of being open and all of the lending that is being done there, my other question is about the impact of digital lending. And I personally used to come to the library a lot more, but now I get all my library books through the library online.
Right.
So is that, with regard to resources, how has that impacted the progress?
So, yeah, so we're seeing about, I would say, anywhere right around 25% of our total usage is digital materials. There are many libraries across the country in the Bay Area where it's a 50/50 split. We'd love to see our increase in digital materials go up. There's a challenge with that in that those eBooks, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, we're late at night, but...
Oh, go ahead.
The price that libraries pay for eBooks and digital audiobooks are exorbitant. For example, a popular digital audiobook, the library's going to be charged anywhere from $80 to $100 for that, for one copy. If we buy that physical audiobook, you're looking at $30 to $40. eBooks, the challenge with eBooks is that the publishers set the terms, and those terms are different. So you have, some eBooks are, they're all higher than the list price for the physical book, but there are limited checkouts. Like after 24 checkouts, you have to buy it again. Or you buy a license for two years, and then you have to buy it again. And so it is a drain on library budgets, and it is hard to keep up with. We did, I did ask for an increase in the materials budget so that we could try and bridge some of this gap, but obviously, you know, if the, we're receiving a lot in the proposed budget, should it be passed? And so that, you know, that's a constant pressure on us. And, you know, we also need to look at kind of what the library looks like in the future. We don't necessarily need as much space for physical items, but how can we rearrange the library so that it provides more dynamic community spaces, things that people need that aren't necessarily just rows and rows and rows of physical books?
Well, and thank you. And I appreciate your, and I support your request for funding for the second year for the social worker at the library and absolutely to make sure to improve safety for patrons as well as staff by having at least two people at the library, at each library at all times. So those are very important. And I, and as you know much better than I do, that the libraries are serving different needs in this, in the environment that we're in now. And as you continue to do that, we, I certainly want to provide the resources that are necessary.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So that's my suggestion. Libraries is in the proposal, and I do support those needs. I also appreciate the conservative budget proposal that's... needs. I also appreciate the conservative budget proposal that's presented by the city manager and all departments. I, we could tell from the presentation, I could, that some departments were a little sad that their requests weren't funded. And as I say that, you know, and I understand the need for cautiousness, but I did bring up earlier the residual fund balance, and what I wanted to point out is that in the proposal, the residual fund balance is intended to support recommendations that may be necess, to support programs and services that may be cut, and to have a residual fund balance in the future in case we continue to see funding that is eliminated through other, that we're receiving currently from other sources like the federal government. And so, having said that, I want to suggest to my colleagues, and I would actually recommend that the, there's two things that are, that are, we're missing, that are being cut, that we have now because of federal cuts, because the federal government has eliminated, well, they didn't eliminate the victim advocate, but it was a grant that was suggested and would have been funded. But there are a lot of cuts to other programs in the Bay Area and nationwide that have been cut by Department of Justice. So I want to be clear that I would support, and I do support the, a way, if there's some way to have a victim advocate position, because also, I've been out a lot in the community, and the other cut that we all are seeing throughout the country is the, actually, it's not a cut, it's a budget increase to ICE and to those programs that are, that are making our community members feel concerned and afraid, community members who may not be documented. And I think having a social worker at the library is one way to address that concern, one way that we can provide support in the community, but a victim advocate as well. And as I talk to members of the community and I look at these budgets, and I think about both the rent program and the prosecution unit, first of all, our rent program is tremendous, and we have an ordinance, we have laws in place to protect renters, but if renters are nervous, or renters are scared, or a landlord is targeting a renter, knowing that that renter is vulnerable because of their status, then we may never hear about it, and we need to know. And that's why I think it would be really helpful and really important to have, to fund a victim advocate in the city attorney's office that could work with the library social worker, that could work with our rent program, and work throughout the city, especially with the police department. And I heard, you know, about domestic violence, and I think that's really critical, to make sure that those people, domestic violence, elderly violence against older Alameda's, those types of things be prosecuted. And unfortunately, sometimes the victims aren't ready to, to share information or to press charges, and even if they're not, in the presentation from the prosecution unit, even if charges won't be, aren't going to be pressed, we can support the victims. And the federal funding is definitely been cut for all of those programs immediately, and I know this personally from other positions that I'm on. The other, the other position that was eliminated was the federal support for the Public Works Maintenance. The, what was the name of the program? The, the soc, or the?
Clean Streets?
Well, the Clean Streets program, but we had an intern, right, what the?
Oh, the Civic Spark Fellow?
Yeah, the Civic Spark. So I would support, if we can find ways to fund that position, the Civic?
Senator Jensen, just to clarify, the two positions for Public Works Clean Streets are separate from the Civic Sparks Fellow for the sustainability program, part-time position for the sustainability program. So just to clarify which one you're referencing.
The Clean Streets program is not currently funded. It's not.
Correct. It's two, it was proposed two positions, maintenance one and two, and is not currently funded. Didn't have any potential federal funding either.
Okay, I'm sorry, I meant the Civic Spark
Right.
position, which was working with transportation. Yeah.
Sustainability.
Right.
Sustainability, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, well, I can look back on my notes a little bit more. But those two positions, I think, are critical, and if there could be ways found, especially since we do have a residual fund balance, and that is what the voiced intent of the residual fund balance is to support positions that we have, or we had, or we could have, to protect our residents from federal reduction in spending in these areas. And finally, I also appreciate that the city manager added, I appreciate all of the presentation from Chief Joshi and the discussion of attrition, the potential, obviously, we're, Chief Joshi mentioned that we anticipate a retirement, so we won't even, it's possible, it sounds like, that we won't even be at 70 immediately, if someone retires in the next three months before September 1st. So I would support the additional two officers that, if there's funding that could be, could be reviewed and for those positions. Thank you.
And I just want to tag on to what you said, Councilmember Jensen. I wrote in my notes that we found funding for a part-time climate tech, and we have a high school student this summer to be doing the work of the Civic Sparks Fellows, and the city manager's nodding her, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks to Alan and our Director Ty and his staff, we're able to find money in existing budget to keep that fellow employed.
So that is awesome, so that's there. And then I'll just throw in, just because one of the things I, we discussed last week in DC, I was, I am part of the mayor's institute for pedestrian safety, which is 12 mayors who were chosen from across the country. I'm the only California mayor, but they were just, we were talking about how to get these road safety projects funded and staffed, and one of the suggestions was, if you have a college, a university in your area, reach out and work with these, I mean, there's UC Berkeley is in our backyard, and there's a, I think we have even a graduate of the planning program there on the dais, our city manager. Isn't that where you got your planning? Didn't you go to Berkeley?
Public Policy degree.
Public Policy, but anyway, that is a field that could be explored for some help on some of these projects. I am going to take a contrarian view on the social worker proposal for the library, and not Director Eitner, because in any way I downplay the importance of safety for library patrons and library staff. And we had a horrible incident, and someone was, a staff was very badly injured by someone, I believe an unsheltered person with mental health issues. But when I hear the, it said that we need a social worker to provide safety and, you know, more capacity, I don't think that's the, that's the role of a social worker. Unarmed security guards, I think that makes a lot of sense, but what I wrote in my notes when this was being discussed is that, is there perhaps some duplication of services here? Because we do have a care team, we heard about the care team, it's robustly funded, and it's a great program, it just won this countywide award, we have a homeless outreach team. And so I think that, you know, rather than a social worker who would be, you know, sitting in an office or rotating around the library, I'm not sure what, I think there might be people who we already have who are more trained to provide that function. And so I, I would not support the idea of a social worker for the library. I very much think that we need to, we need to increase security, but, and maybe there's new updated trainings for house staff. I know library staff, as was noted, are on the front lines, so there's, I think, just by making the changes to the hours, there shouldn't be just one person staffing the library late at night when there's very few patrons. And so I certainly support the truncated hours at some places, but it's a net increase overall. But that one just doesn't, it just doesn't feel right to me, so I would not support the social worker funding. And I'm going to go into the rest of my remarks after we hear from, let me just see if there was anything else I wanted to touch on, just in the spirit of trying to have more of a discussion. Oh, I very much support everything you said, I think what everyone said so far about the victim advocate position, but Councilmember Jensen, you really amplified on that. And I believe that Chief Joshi and I have had a conversation where he told me, you told me that the violent crime that we see in Alameda, for the most part, tends to be intimate partner, people know each other, domestic violence. And so it just, it pains me to think that we would say, in this fiscal year or in our two-year budget, we just, we don't have the funding for that. I think we have to find the funding for that. And Julia Gonzalez, you did such a lovely job presenting on the criminal prosecution unit, and Councilmember Jensen, I think that your concern, and it's real and appropriate for the immigrant population, would be best served by, by members of the city attorney's office or the, the public, a victim advocate who would be set up to address all of those, those needs. Because it's, it is true, we need to take that very seriously.
And I would add that another, as I, as I view the, our budget through the lens of the federal budget as well, that I'm not sure if everyone was paying attention, because it's changes, there's so much every day, but now, English is the only language and the official language of the federal government, so it's even more critical that we have support for, for our residents who speak little English or who, for who English is a second language.
I agree. And then I, yes, that was, that was what I wanted to just touch on that you had raised. And so on to you, Councilmember Dayson.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I think I have eight points. So the first point I want to raise is 88 total police officers and 65 officers in the field, I believe, has, for a number of years, been our target. And it's been a number that wasn't just picked out of a hat, but a number that corresponds to some metrics as to what a city of our size should have in terms of the number of police officers in the field especially. Point number two, but the way I see it, that now, instead of 65, we are considering limiting the number of officers in the field the chief is authorized to hire to 65, and to 47, to 47. And to go from 47 from 65 represents basically, mathematically, a 28% decrease from the number that we should have. And even if we do add two more officers to the 47, that still represents a 25% decrease from the number that we should have. To me, I think anytime, and this is point number three, I think anytime you are asked to lower your expectations of police officers in the field by 25 or 28%, I think that's the definition of a deep fiscal problem. So, you know, point number four, speaking honestly with my colleagues on the council dais, as well as with the city staff, and I mean this with all due respect, I have not heard the public clamoring for more analysts in City Hall. But what I have heard is a clamoring for more police officers on the ground. And again, I want to say that, I'm trying to say that in as respectful manner as possible. The challenge, though, is how do you pay to get to 65 officers in the field instead of 47? So my recommendations, I think, and these are just recommendations for staff to mull over, maybe they'll look at different ways, but there's different aspects to the recommendation, and the first aspect has to do with this. There are four positions that I think we need to seriously reconsider. One of the positions is not a general fund position, but it is a, it is a position within the base reuse, the 178,000 admin management analyst. If we have $178,000 and available for an admin management analyst from some base reuse source, I need, I think we should consider using the same revenues instead, for now, to pay for police officers, at least for their time at Alameda Point. So that's one. Again, that's not a general fund position, but that is nonetheless a position that we're being asked to fund from some source of revenue. Two positions within planning, building, and transportation, the $60,750 code enforcement program costs, I think if they're, and also the $50,000 CAO transportation and climate. Don't get me wrong, obviously, these are, these are important positions, but as council members, we are being asked to make a choice between what we think the public needs. And I, and I think we should revisit using general fund dollars for those, and instead contemplate using the money for, for police to getting to, to getting to 65. And then finally, within the city manager's office, and the fourth one, I mean, and again, with all due respect to the assistant city manager and the city manager, I just don't think now's the time for a senior management analyst at $206,000. So when you total those four positions, that's $494,000, $495,000. But that still is short of the $2.8 million that is required to authorize the chief to hire 65. So I think you can't just, you know, cut and then transfer those cuts to the police, you have to do, look at other things. And so what I would hope, talking about the very first thing that we talked about this evening, you know, I do want us to look at researching, targeting more funds, and I want to emphasize researching, because maybe the research will reveal that it's not, that there's nothing to be had. So I want city staff to research targeting more funds from base reuse lease revenues, from municipal service fund dollars from Alameda Point, and 1% sale, property taxes generated at Alameda Point, and sales tax generated at Alameda Point, to research all of these Alameda Point revenues and to see if there's any amount, I'm not saying all, but if there's any amount of these revenues that can pay for police services at Alameda Point. And I want to emphasize, again, I'm asking staff to research this, because maybe in doing the research, sorry, you know, we've tapped those out already, so, you know, just let me know what the research determines. And finally, I do think that we, as a council, we do need to revisit some of the elements we discussed recently with regard to labor negotiations, and obviously, I'm not going to go into details, but we need to discuss some of those elements that we discussed in April, because there were some discrete dollar impacts that were estimated, and, you know, whether or not those-
Councilmember Dayson, remind me when in April we discussed this?
I think it was April 15th, the closed door, the labor negotiations.
In closed session?
Yeah. So I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything in particular, I'm just saying revisit, so.
I would love you to say that
Yeah.
In closed session.
Yeah.
Period, full stop, thank you.
So I, you know, I just want to get back, what we're asking of the police chief is, we're limiting his hiring authority to 47, and therefore, we're limiting right now, and therefore, we're also limiting his dollar budget authority. And if for some reason, you know, we think there's three more police officers that we could hire, the way that we're going now is, he can't hire those additional three officers, because we've limited his dollar authority. I mean, the only way to do it is just redo, revisit the whole budget again. And to me, the punchline is, if you're going from 65 to 47 officers in the field, I think that that's kind of a signal that we've got a significant fiscal challenge here, and, and as such, I just don't think now's the time to be hiring more analysts. And again, I say that with all due respect. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just?
Of course, city manager.
I just want to clarify, we are not recommending the senior management analyst in the city manager's office. So that was on that recommended slate.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure, we, yeah, the only new positions for the general fund that we recommend, and this, so this was consistent across all departments, the only ones that we are recommending are ones that had significant offsets from either reductions in, in contract expenses or revenues to help cover those, so.
Do you want to pull up that?
Sure.
Pull up that, that last slide.
I just want to make sure, so that was, although we think there's a need, just like all, you heard a lot of needs, mainly, we wanted the council to know there are needs out there, and I asked staff to do the same thing for me, so I'm aware of them, because then it helps me- then it helps me think about, you know, planning for the future. But all general fund requests that didn't have significant offsets were rejected. So, I think here's, and so the result of new personnel requests in the general fund is a hundred thousand dollars total, because each of these were chosen because, they were recommended because they had significant offsets of some sort.
Okay.
So, only the Park, Park Tech, because we were able to reduce that contract, the program specialist, because we were able to essentially pay for more than half of it through a contract reduction, the same with the office assistant upgrade, which was a very small amount. But those are, these are the only positions in the general fund.
Well, in that case, then, I can only find three positions amounting to roughly two hundred thousand dollars.
Right. I just wanted to make sure you understood, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Was that all for you, Councilmember?
That's it.
Councilmember Bolis, your hand up, go ahead. Yeah?
Thanks. Yeah, I just, I think it might be good to kind of see where we are with a little bit more specificity. I would challenge my colleagues to do that. I started very general as well, but I think that will really help city staff. What I noticed, in, in trying to basically complement the city's work, I've noticed a pretty moderate and conservative approach to the couple of years that we see ahead of ourselves. And I, when it comes to public safety, I think Councilmember Desog made some really good points, but I don't think that it's, it's likely that the police department would be able to get to eighty-eight officers, even if we were authorizing it right now. So, I think that a moderate and kind of conservative, but respectful of the public will, would be to look at seventy-two, that's probably the sweet spot, but we should also consider seventy-four. I know the city is currently recommending seventy, but I think that sort of balances the budget constraints with the, the public interest in the, in the public safety. I also want to indicate that, I think that where city staff will probably be the most helped by our comments will be, what our comfort level is, is into dipping into the residual fund, right? And I'm pretty comfortable with the city manager's recommendation on that. I do think that, when we started to have a discussion about the officers, and that was sort of a hinge point, where we were talking about this specifically, right? When it came to the number of seventy-two officers, then we talked about what that would mean. And, but I think that if that's the, and that's a little bit, it's approximately, if I remember correctly, approximately half of the residual fund would be spent. It's a substantial amount of money. But at the same time, you see evidence in this plan that the city staff here has really tried to make some hard decisions. They're, they're not recommending certain things that are proposed. There are lots of rocks that have been turned over in terms of finding ways to increase revenues and decrease expenses. Those are both included here. So, I don't see this proposal as being anything other than trying to look at a difficult fiscal time and how to get through it, but at the same time, putting a priority on our most essential services, our most retention of our employees, and trying to continue the progress that the city's made. And I, and I want to repeat again, I do believe we're in a pretty sound fiscal condition as it, as it compares to other cities, right now, at least in the Bay Area, right? We've seen that through some of the analysis here. And that doesn't mean that hard times aren't coming, that's definitely possible, right? But, at the same time, I don't hear any council members talking about cutting staffing or services. That's one of the key principles that's in the city, the, the current city budget proposal, is that we're not cutting, we're not doing arbitrary cuts across departments, we're not taking certain services and removing them, and we're trying to fine-tune and enhance where our, our advantages already are. And I think there's a magnification effect, too. And if you look carefully at some of these proposals, you see where certain enhancements are being made, it's going to lead to additional city revenue, because it's going to take advantage, like, for example, in base reuse. If there's some more talent there, I would assume, and I, I, I take that portion as being, you know, experts, I mean, not only do we have the experts in that area, but our city manager herself has a lot of expertise in this area. And so, I'm assuming if we're spending more in that area, it's going to mean we're going to have more leases, we're going to have more sales, and we're going to have more revenue than even in this budget. So, to be, to be clear, so I, I'm pretty comfortable with the proposal as to residual funds, and I've kind of outlined where I think on the public safety. So, I'm trying to be as specific as possible for, for the benefit of, of the, this is a difficult process to, to put all these pieces together, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Desog?
If I can also add one more point, and, you know, there's a lot of ways to address this. I mean, staff could come back with policies that says, you know, anytime there's new money that happens to pop, unanticipated revenues that happens to pop up, maybe we have, you know, staff recommends a policy that that goes towards funding police for the next fiscal year, you know, something like that. So, there's just a lot of ways that I think staff can figure out. I'm just trying to give you some specific areas where I think, I, I don't think the issue is that, that we're being asked to cut. The issue really is, to where should the incremental revenues go? Because this budget, as it's written, is basically, these are the revenues above baseline. That's the way that, so, that's, in essence, incremental revenues. So, the question is, where should the incremental revenues go? Not, we're dealing with deficits and having to cut, but we, we've got small amounts in all these different places. Should all the small amounts go to all these different places, or should they go towards, you know, eighty-eight police officers? That's a policy question, so.
But I, I just would say to that, that one-time money doesn't, shouldn't be used to fund ongoing expenses. So, we do have that policy that-
I didn't say one-time, I said unanticipated. So, if, if-
So, an unanticipated revenue, ongoing revenue stream that we hadn't heretofore known about?
Well, a large property gets sold, there's a, there is a-
That's one time.
Exactly, but there also might be property tax, sales tax generated with that new property, so incremental property taxes generated from that property, so.
We should be creative in looking at various income, revenue sources. Vice Mayor Parr.
So, it's kind of along the same lines as the conversation we're having. But Mayor, you said, you, you had talked about the social worker for the library, so I was wondering if, since it was recommended, I was wondering if Director Eitner can speak to that, and why that was important, and like, if you could just describe what that would look like if, if that were funded.
And I would be interested in knowing, is this a model that's being used in other libraries? And so, tell us about it.
Absolutely. This is, well, social workers in libraries are very common now. They are common in, I, I don't recall if San Francisco Public Library was the first or the second. Denver Public Library, where I used to work, has social workers. Many libraries have social workers. What we realize is, is when people come in to us with crises, and they're, they need services, there's different approaches for each person. Some people might be triggered by a security guard. Other people might be triggered by, if we, if they're very upset, it may be triggered if we have to call APD for support. That can inflame things. Social workers have unique skills in de-escalation, and finding a way to find, with common ground with someone, and help, you know, reduce the, the impact of unwanted behaviors, or get them to be to a place where they can calm down and they can use the library easily. We see this all as a, it's a suite of how do we deal with the societal problems that come to our door every day? This isn't, I, I'm not exaggerating when I say that these are things that we deal with every day. We need the resources to help us with this. A social worker is one of those resources. Security guards is one of those resources. Training our staff is another one of those resources. This social worker will also help us with operations. It's not just doing the social, direct social work with the people who come into the library. As I mentioned, the library has a capacity problem. We are stretched so thin that we don't have the ability to try new services and to do new things. That social worker will be able to work the reference desk, when they're not actively engaging in helping other people. So, it's not just one-hundred percent social work, there's a piece of it that helps us with operations as well. We try and look at this, the issues that the library faces holistically, and it's hard for us to imagine a way to solve this problem without a social worker presence.
And then, I was going to make a comment, because Chief Joshi was talking, had mentioned that what we want really is prevention before anything else. So, I, I just see this as like, social worker is the first step, and then calling the care team, and then the last resort would be calling the police. So, I, I just think, it just makes sense, so. I can, I can see why you recommended this.
I think that I, I still have a hard time seeing this as, I, I, in the, in the greater sense, I can see how it, a social worker could help increase safety, but I don't think a social worker would have helped. Maybe they would have had a different approach, but perhaps the, the individuals that had that horrible episode would have had it anyway. But I would, because this is so novel, and the cities you listed, I mean, truly have significant problems, San Francisco Library, Sacramento, Denver's a big city with, I'm sure, many libraries. But if we were to do this, I would caution against hiring someone as city staff. I would say this was one where we could approach cautiously with a contract employee, because once we hire, it's, you know, it's in our budget, we provide benefits, it's, and we want to, you know, at the end of the day, we want to make sure we're not cutting services like library hours. I-
Library hours are going up, not going down.
Yeah, well, but I know, but right now, but I'm just saying, going into the future, which is uncertain financially, I would say that this is one that, you know, it, I would say it wouldn't hurt to start conservatively with a contract social worker. If it just is a rousing success, council can always come back and say, yeah, let's do this for, you know, as part of the budget, please.
If I may, after the incident that you were referencing occurred, we had safety meetings with all of the library staff to figure out ways that they would feel safe to work at the library. Their top three priorities, the first top priority is a social worker. Their second priority is more full-time staff, less reliance on part-time staff. Their third priority, I think if I'm remembering in the right order, was a security guard. We are directly responding to the needs of our staff, of our city colleagues, who, quite frankly, are on the front lines with this. We do have resources that we can call, but if they're engaged, there's no one to come. If the cares team is busy, and we need them, and we have someone who's in crisis, we're waiting, and while, and while that is happening, the library is completely disrupted by what's going on. It's, there is a point where we start to stretch the resources we have too thin, and the problems that San Francisco and other large cities have, they're here in Alameda. I live in Alameda. They're here, and we need to address those problems here, too.
And how often do you call the care team to the library?
We call the care team, it, it depends. We call the care team, let's, less than once a week. We call the police more often than we call the care team.
And why?
Because the, the situation at the library is so disruptive that we need help to get the person out of the building. Or we need someone who can respond quickly, so we call nine-one-one. I mean, the situations that we deal with at the library are serious. The same week of the incident where the staff member was injured, there were two people who were smoking drug, smoking marijuana in the bathroom, and I was trying to get them out of the library. And as I was trying to get them out of the library, one of them spat in my face. So, I, I'm, I'm saying all of this is like, it's day in and day out, it's a struggle at the library, and we need help. A social worker provides us with help.
No, and I'm, I'm, understand, and I respect your concerns and those of your staff, and I, but I'm just saying, my preference would be to start with a contract social worker, and I would think that a social worker on staff, I mean, this might, that, thank you. And I don't think we need you up here for, you can sit down.
I want to call-
Oh, you want to, okay. Mr. Eitner, come back, please. I, I, Councilmember Jensen had her hand up first, and then I'll go back to you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Parr.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for bringing up those points. And I, you do make some very good points, and I want, and what I, as I look at the budget, not just here, and I've also mentioned this to the city manager, I, I try and think about how, having worked in a, a less functional city across the estuary, but think about how departments can work together. And we, I, as I look at the budget, I see that there's, you have the proposal for a social worker, which would address people with mental health issues, people with, I, I know that there's a number of unhoused individuals who come to the library, because it's a safe, open space. And the city, there's also funding to continue the care program, which of course is necessary, and that's, that's through savings, and, or, no, that's to continue it, because it's been cut, because our, ARPA funds were cut, and, or for whatever.
Yeah, the care team hasn't been cut, but the, the full cost of it is now being borne by the general fund-
Thank you.
-because those ARPA funds, yeah, were, were expended.
And we also are being asked to approve a housing and human services outreach and case manager, which will be, will be, because of, will, will be established by maintaining and maintain current service levels, by utilizing two existing part-time case manager positions. So, and, and the other part of the description for the, the case manager in Housing and Human Services Division is to retain and grow the newly developed homeless prevention program. So, I would just put it out there, that I would imagine that, that homeless prevention is probably, or, or addressing homeless people, or case management would be something that would be eventually the social worker, if when we're hired, would be having many people come to them with those types of problems. So, is there a way to think about possibly housing the human services outreach and case manager at the library? And that way, we could combine, I mean, not combine, or we could see how it goes for one year, and also, oh, I'll say something else later, but, you know, that's the kind of thing that, that we could not have the entire two positions, and possibly provide the services that are definitely needed throughout the city, but at the library as well.
And actually, that's a discussion for the council. I, I don't think we need more information from-
Right, no, I wanted to, to get the information about the unhoused people who are being, being served by the library.
All right, thank you so much. Back to you, Vice, oh, okay, City Manager Otte, you were saying?
I don't know that, I was, I had a list of things, the feedback, but I don't, Mayor, you haven't provided, so I was going to wait, but I do, I, it is, I don't want to respond to just that one, I was going to go through kind of the whole list.
Yeah, and I haven't made my remarks yet, but I want to hear from the Vice Mayor.
Just really quickly, because part of the recommendation is a security guard, and another recommendation is the social worker, so I, I, when I look at de-escalation, I, I mean, just from my job, it, you know, uniforms can often trigger people, so that's why I definitely like the idea of a social worker. And then, of course, if things escalate, the care team can be called, and so can Alameda Police. Apparently, they're called, I mean, it sounds often. So, I, I just think this is, I, I'm just a big fan of de-escalation, it works, and that's where I'm at with that. So, if we were going to look for savings, I would save on the security guard and not the social worker.
What I would like to have an idea of is how long it takes for the care team to respond. Could I ask Chief Luby to come up? Because I'm, I'm hearing, I think I heard library directors say that there's two reasons they call the police more often. One is that people are being violent, but others is that they come faster. So, help us understand response time to the care team, if you can.
So, the care team, if available, and not assigned to another incident or committed in some other way, would be travel time from Grand Street- in some other way, would be travel time from Grand Street, from Station Three, unless they're somewhere else in the city doing training or something along those lines. If they're committed, then they could be at John George, they could be at the hospital. That's, that's a variable. It's hard to put, put a finger on. I guess with the, you know, the police station's right across the street, so.
So, across the street from the library?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get that. So what do, what do we tell people when they call for a care team and they're not there? Is it, we'll get back to you, or?
It's, well, the calls come in to police dispatch, triage the calls, calls if it's for the care team, would then transfer over to our regional dispatch center, dispatches us. If the care team's not available, it'll go back to PD with an ETA, or if there is one. And at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, at that time, decision is made on the PD side if they will assign an officer.
Feel free to come up, Chief Joshi, if you've got some information to add.
Right. I assume at that point, PD decides if they'll assign an officer.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to get some data from dispatch.
Very data-driven, yes.
Yeah, so if, if a care team call comes in, so a couple of things cannot exist. It can't be violence, can't be weapons or crime. That's the only time that the care team would take primary. If care team is not available, then the police department would handle it if it includes any of those three things that I talked about. But if it's simply just a mental health incident that doesn't require an emergency intervention, then it'll be held for the care team. And again, it depends on when the care team is available. If they're gonna be relative, available relatively soon, then we'll let them take it.
And are your officers trained in de-escalation?
Yes, they are. They receive the training in the academy and then in their ongoing professional development.
And the homeless outreach team, is that part of the police department?
So we have a homeless liaison officer that works closely with Assistant City Manager Woolbridge. But the outreach team is through the Assistant City Manager's office.
All right. Thank you both. Okay, thank you. Let me go quickly over my comments and concerns. I, I think I agree with you, Vice Mayor, about, I would pass on the security guard unarmed, well, I mean, that's fine, but we have the care team, we have APD if it involves a weapon or violence. And so that might be duplicative of services at a time when we're trying to stretch this budget. I really would like to start this as a pilot program with a contract social worker and then develop it with input from library director and library staff. I do have concerns about the, the request for the added position for the Program Specialist for Housing and Human Services to provide consistency and effectiveness for the homeless outreach. This is when my iPad freezes, for the, now that we're gonna take these services in-house that have previously been contracted out. The reason for my hesitancy is we have seen so much turnover in this department, a loss of a lot of personnel. We're hearing now about this, you know, taking the mobile outreach and case management in-house. And, you know, I think those are all great things. I would like to see a more fleshed-out plan because I feel like we've been trying a number of different things. And I definitely hear from the public that is impacted by unsheltered population, especially in Alameda, point around our transitional housing. So I, this is one that, what, maybe in the second year of the two-year budget would be enough time to really work out what is, what's the model. This is, you know, this is a big deal. From the time that we started this, I think we've always worked with other outside agencies. And I do understand, because I follow this, it's gotten more challenging and more challenging. But I just, there's a lot of turnover, a lot of new people, and I just don't wanna throw money at something without having a good, solid plan. So I'm, I am, I would like to wait on that one. Just a couple of points, because my colleagues have raised, you know, very important points. One of the things we need to do, it's not only bringing in as much revenue as we can find, looking in the Sophoclesians, whatever, it's also reducing our expenditures. And part of that is in our control. It is reducing our exposure to liability. So that is why the tree maintenance programs are so important in public works and in the parks. I want us to be proactive. Those sidewalks on Gibbons Drive cause me nightmares because they're just like an accident, a trip and fall waiting to happen. I know it's complicated, I get that, but so are six- and seven-figure settlements and judgments. So let's do that. This is really little, but the Mastic Senior Center is amazing, and I agree completely with Director Long, that not only do I think it's the best in Northern California, because I went to their volunteer appreciation luncheon recently, and a number of people had moved here from out of state, out of the area, and they, they were just, and it was just so uplifting. I wrote about it in my last newspaper article as an antidote to the loneliness epidemic. But I was sitting at the table with a board member, and I was saying, and I think Assistant City Manager Woolridge got me the numbers, the thrift shop at Mastic brings in nets over $100,000 a year that goes toward defraying the cost of their projects. I think they're able to offer programs and services that reduce costs. And this board member said, yeah, you know, we're only open like two days a week, not even full days. We're thinking of increasing our hours. And I said, oh, my gosh, you should do that, too. It's not gonna solve our budget woes. I don't know. It might. They're pretty energetic. But I just think if there's any opportunity to do that, there's, there's something like 180 volunteers across all different fields that were honored that day. So, but I would say that would just bring more money into Mastic if you can do that. And then, yes, to colleague Greg Bowler's point, Councilmember Bowler, to prioritize, I, I do want to see as, oh, and I'm gonna just address what Councilmember Desok said about the, the management analyst, I think, out at Base Reusing Economic Development. These are the folks that are managing the leases, negotiating the contracts, getting us better deals. They are bringing money in, and they can't get to everything if they're stretched so thin. So I definitely think that is money worth spending. And I, I am relieved to know that the other management analyst position isn't in there. But my priorities are getting, finding the funding for those two positions for police, the victim advocate, getting the funding for that. And also, Councilmember Desok, I would just remind you that this is also a time when, because I think you said there was something about climate position. This is also a time when the Trump administration is eliminating all environmental protections, just, you know, shrinking the EPA. And we're an island. Climate change, sea level rise is truly an existential threat. So I applaud what's, what's being done now. And then I would like to see a pilot program with the social worker, but on a contract basis. And I would ask to defer the request for the position for HHS to the second year of the cycle to give time for a complete and thorough plan for how it would be employed. Count City Manager, you wanted to weigh in?
Amazing, I just wanna summarize, so I could see if I got enough direction to try to move forward and make sure. So what I hear is, which we talked about earlier, was to try to look for the funding of about 72 to 74 police officers. Look at our CFDs, our Community Facilities Districts, both at the base and Alameda Landing, see if there's potentially some additional funding that could be used to offset some of the police costs. We will look at that. I'm not sure we can use lease revenues, but we'll look at it, and we'll do some additional analysis on the property taxes that were generated from there. Look at funding the victims' advocate position. I think, maybe to get at Councilmember Desok's question, this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we can do is, we do mid-year at six months, we do mid-cycle at a year, and then a mid-year again. So that every six months, we're evaluating how we're doing financially. I mean, we'll be evaluating much more than that. The finance team will be looking at it more frequently. But it gives us an opportunity to talk again about whether or not we can hire additional police or do more. And so I think I heard that and happy to do that as well as part of each of those kind of points that we have. And then keep the, and I think the social worker in this, is already starting in the second year, but to have that be a contract, and a contract, and then also to look at the program specialist in the second year as a contract. So, and that's the one that I just put out there, wasn't, I'm not sure if there is unanimous on that, but we'll look at it and see what we can come up with in terms of proposal for those different pieces. But we'll, we'll look at that and see what we can do on both those things.
I think, did I also hear dropping the security guard, at least from a couple of us?
Oh, I heard, and it would rather drop the security guard than remove the social worker, was what I heard.
Yeah, but I just didn't hear you say anything about the...
I guess I didn't, because I didn't hear you dropping the social worker, or that this, so is there unanimous support to drop the security guard?
Well, I don't, I'm not sure there's unanimous support for everything that the mayor proposed, actually. I mean, I...
And I don't know that we need unanimous support. I think majority support probably does.
Majority support, I guess, for...
But I think Councilmember Jensen raised the idea of duplicative services, and maybe we could have...
Between the program specialist and the social worker, and then I heard Vice Mayor Pryor say, it would rather keep the social worker but take the security, if we had one of those, to swap those in terms of, so to keep the social worker but eliminate the security guard.
Well, I guess, and I'll call you next, but I guess I'm trying to understand the different layers, social worker to help de-escalate a situation right then, right there, and could also be used to help with staffing because they could work at the reference desk, which must be an interesting training program. But, and then the care team, when appropriate, police when needed for violence. And so I am thinking that with the additional staffing and reduced hours at night, that might add a measure of safety. Over to you, Councilmember Jensen.
Oh, thank you. I, and I, I appreciate this discussion. And the, I wanna be clear, though, that the social worker wasn't until the second year. I wanna appreciate also that Councilmember Desok and the discussion about coming back, bringing the budget back to see where possible new positions might be, or where, if we have any new sources of revenue. I, I didn't hear you talk about the Harbor Bay Property Tax Increment. If you could just take a look at that, too, and see whether there's more funds, or whether any elimination of it would be in the, would support the budget requests.
Yeah, we're already assuming in our baseline that we are able to get $1 million a year from that. Right now, it's about 1.4 million, so that's already built into our baseline budget, is that we're able to, to access about a million of the 1.4 that's currently going to them, yeah.
So with regard to the library, I'm...
Sorry, I was waiting. That was me after you're done. Sorry.
Okay. With regard to the library, it, staff is not comfortable, and as we heard, you know, whether or not it's a social worker in year two, or, or security guards immediately, reducing hours immediately. I mean, I would hesitate to just say, let's wait until year two, when the first action happens, to do a contract social worker. So I actually would support, as I mentioned, looking at these two positions, looking at possibly putting the HHS case manager for households at risk of becoming homeless, for supporting unhoused people and, and other needs, to having that position be someone that could support, not the reference desk, unfortunately, probably, but the needs of unhoused and families at the library. Because we also know that people, we have students, more and more. I heard from Chris Tam, sent out a note today about an unhoused student that needed something. And we have families that may use the library as their first resource, if they're unhoused, if they're, if they're, they're not English proficient, if they have kids that have needs. So I, I really think that it would be, it would be a good idea to look at, I know that the expansion of the Housing and Human Services program is necessary, and we are seeing more need in that area, but also at the library. That's where many of these residents are, can be found.
Is it okay, Mayor, if we have Assistant City Manager?
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one point.
Assistant City Manager Woolridge, yeah.
Sorry. I just wanted to make one point about the social workers, in that when talking about care team and social workers, is care team does an amazing job, and they do the immediate response. They have some follow-up with their contract Alameda Family Services. But the social worker positions we're looking at at the library and HHS really can do more ongoing case management. And in the, in the library and out on our streets, the goal really is to get people into housing. But if we're, so these, these positions are really designed to be less reactive, more proactive, less reactive, right, to really follow people, really get them into housing, which is the goal. So I just wanted to point that out. I think we, I will certainly work with the library and HHS staff and see what we can do in regards to consolidating these services and, given the budget environment, and lay out a plan and bring it back to council. And then, Mayor, can I just make one other, I just wanna, so with the additional, and we'll look at it, I just wanna get, I think Councilmember Bowler brought this up, too, about where we're comfortable in terms of our fund balance, because adding police officers and adding the victims' advocate positions, I looked at the numbers for two part-time crimes, victims' advocate, advocates, so I don't have the numbers for a permanent one. But we, between the two officers and, just to give you a sense of order magnitude, and the victims' advocate, we would be down to about $8 million of residual fund balance. So I just, but that's with two part-time victims' advocate. I haven't priced, I didn't price out the permanent as well, because we're not sure about the grants. We know grants are coming in, so we could look at, so it could be less, it'd probably be a little less than $8 million in residual fund balance to make those two changes. We'll keep looking at it, but, yeah.
And I have a question. If we did two part-time instead of one full-time, do we save benefits?
We do. Yeah, I think we do. I don't know if it's a lot. We'll look at it, exactly what that difference is. It may not be that much, and it may be we're just doing the permanent, but let us look at that a little bit. But there is a difference between the two part-time. And it allows us to see if you get the grants. And if you get the grants, then we could convert that to a permanent position. But I'm just telling you what I priced to look at some scenarios. But it may not be a big difference financially, in which case, we may just wanna do the full. But it does, I just wanna make sure everyone's comfortable. It would lower our fund balance to about 8 million to make the changes in terms of two additional officers and the victims' advocate. So does 8 million as a residual fund balance seem like an okay place to end up?
And I will just be the first one to say that I don't think 8 million is a lot of money. But I, for those purposes, and we just have to be really careful about not adding on, adding on. There's things that would be nice, we'd like to have, but this is not just any year. And, you know, someone may have a crystal ball better than mine, but I, I believe people, like the President Protima of the State Senate, when he says it's gonna get worse before it gets better. So I don't know. What do people think? Vice Mayor, you have had your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, it was really just to, I just wanna tighten up what Councilmember Jensen said. So, for example, on what was proposed, there was proposed that a security guard in the library would start year one. So what I am saying is that I would rather have a social worker, even if it's a contract, start year one. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I, yeah.
And that's it.
I would, I would agree with that. Any other thoughts on that particular one? Councilmember Bowler?
I, you know, I, I'm not an expert on the, what's happening in the library. I think that, that there has to be a real reliance on... think that, that there has to be a real reliance on an evaluation there and whether or not, we wanna make sure our library staff are feeling safe, right, so, and what is the, the cost for the, the security, I know we have some information there, but I, I kinda leave this, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty much in the weeds, I think everyone here sees some value in the social work for sure, we would prefer not to have security guards at our library, we prefer if the, if the social worker is adequate to solve the problem, that would be, that would be better, but, um, I don't pretend to know for sure that that's the case.
Well, I think the point was also made that we're talking about the main library, which is across the street from the Police Department, so, um-
If I may, just quickly about the security guard, um, I, I believe we're the only library in our immediate area that does not have security guards at their libraries, Richmond, Berkeley, Oakland, San Leandro, all have security guards that work at their libraries, um, we are an outlier in the, in that respect.
The only other thing I'll add about this, I'd like-
Assistant City Manager Woldridge, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mayor. That I'd like to add to Director Eitner's comment about the security guard is that the security guards, uh, would be contractual and there would be a security guard there at all times, the library, main library is open, a social worker position, um, especially if shared between HHS, would be both out on the streets and at the library, so it would be limited hours at the library.
Okay.
Why don't, let us go back and talk and look at it and see what we can do, um, and then my suggestion might be, I don't know if, how the council's amenable, is that because our next meeting is on the thirteenth, that maybe we could do a little homework, talk amongst ourselves, just have a little time to process some of the feedback, if we continue this meeting to the thirteenth, it would allow us, at the very least, just to, it seems like we're, we're pretty close here, uh, there's last issue, I think we'd like to do a little more research and discussion and we could come back and give a report on, and run some financials too, on what these proposals end up looking like, so is that okay to continue it and we can come back at the beginning of the thirteenth and, and kinda put a finer point on everything?
Anything that's okay with the city clerk, is okay with me, I think you're telling me we need to take a vote?
Yeah, and so you'll just continue it to that May thirteenth, six P.M., uh, meeting, and we'll just revise the agenda tomorrow to add it on there and everybody will know.
You can never have too many meetings on your calendar, that was already on our calendar.
It is, just adding items.
So what, um, what I'm looking for is a motion to continue this meeting to Tuesday, is it Tuesday?
Tuesday, May thirteenth, at six P.M.
Tuesday, May thirteenth, at six P.M. Moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor, all those, in favor, signify by stating aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, that passes unanimously. Okay, so then, um, we, and I appreciate that, I think that's, that's a great idea, cause you've heard a lot tonight, you can sit down and, and mull it over and, and bring it back to us then, and we still will have time to do the CIB, CIP discussion. City, did you wanna say something, or?
Oh, no, I, I was just gonna suggest you take a vote to continue, which you did.
Oh, okay, yes, I did, um, okay, um, thank you, everybody, especially staff, really nice job, um, putting all this together, but council, great discussion, I love having a meeting where we talk back and forth about ideas and, um, with that, this meeting is adjourned, it is ten fifty-one, okay, see you all soon.